You want to start the video or the recording?
Recording is started, thank you.
Great, thanks Brenda. It's 6 o'clock on June 4th, 2020. I'm calling to order the June 4th, 2020 City of Boulder Planning Board meeting. The first order of business is for me to turn it over to Brenda Rittenhour, who is our mediator tonight, handling the technology on the Zoom platform. And Brenda's going to handle explaining the way the meeting is going to go. So Brenda, take it away.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us here in this virtual space, in this world that we have been learning a lot about how to make work in the ways that, that we hope meet your expectations for how a city board should go. We've learned a lot in the last couple of months. We continue to learn. We always learn something new at every meeting, which means something we don't expect happens. And when that happens, we appreciate your patience as we take just a moment or two to get ourselves in order. I'm going to share now the meeting rules that we have adopted in order to keep these meetings safe. That's not the correct slide. So let me try that one again. See, right from the beginning. So my apologies. Let's start again. Sharing my screen. All right. We are pleased to have you join us. We have learned a lot about how to keep these meetings safe. We've learned that on the platform we are using, there are people who are not members of our community who will use this platform to be disruptive and for their own purposes. And for that reason, City Council adopted these rules to be used at public meetings. So we have been called together to conduct the business of the City of Boulder. Activities that disrupt shall be, sorry about this. My thing is not cooperating with me. I'm going to leave it in this mode and hopefully you can read it. So the meeting has been called to conduct business. The time for speaking may be limited and that is the amount of time you're allowed to speak. You shall not speak except when recognized by the chair and you cannot speak for longer than the time allotted. Each person shall indicate that they would like to participate in public comment or open comment by using the raise hand function. And I'll tell you that now so that you may do so at the moment if you would like. So that we're ready at the time. You open the participant icon on the menu and then you will see the raise function, the raise hand function there. That's how you'll indicate you'd like to speak. We do need a full name if you are going to speak associated with your presence on screen. And therefore, we would appreciate you either changing your name if you know how or sending me your full name so that I can change it for you. No video is permitted except for city officials, employees, and invited speakers or presenters. That does include during open and public comment. And that again is to help keep us safe from disruptors of the meeting. If you do have your video on and you're not city staff or a board member at this moment, we would appreciate you turn it off. I can do that for you if necessary. The person presiding at the meeting shall enforce these rules. That's our chair, Carmen Zuckerman. And we will need to mute anyone who is not following the rules. The chat function is enabled only to chat with me as the host and only about technical details. And we don't want the chat to start being used for a side conversation about the meeting, just as it would not be able to happen that way in person. So please only for technical questions to me, the host. And only the host and individuals designated by the host will be permitted to share its screens during this meeting. Thank you very much. That is all I have at the moment.
Okay, great. Thank you, Brenda. Then the, the next matter on the agenda is approval of minutes. I don't believe we have any minutes to approve. So we will move on to number three, which is public participation. And this is for members of the public who want to address the board about items that aren't on the public hearing agenda tonight. On the public hearing agenda tonight are two concept plans, one for 5691 South Boulder Road, the other for 2727 29th Street. If you desire to address the board on either of those two concept plan reviews, now is not the time to address the board. It will be after you hear the presentations on each of those concept plan items. But for any other item that a member of the public wants to address the board on, now's your chance. Brenda, I'll let you take public comment at this point, if there is any.
Great, thank you. We have two hands at the moment. Again, if you would like to participate in public comment, please use the participant icon at the bottom menu. If you scroll your mouse over the bottom, or sometimes your menu might be found at the top. If you click on the participant button, a box will open. At the bottom of that box, you will see a button that says raise hand. And that's how you can indicate that you would like to participate in open comment tonight. I do have, I don't have the full name of the two people who have indicated they would like to participate. There hasn't been a lot of time to help out with getting their full names. So we'll just ask you to please say and spell your whole name when we begin, when we unmute your microphone. And then we'll begin the timer after you've started your comments. So we still have the same two names. So I'm going to go ahead and Lynn will be coming to you first. And Steve and I also see you. Lynn will be coming to you first, followed by Joni. So I'm going to share my screen with the timer. Give me one moment, please. There it is. And Lynn, I am unmuting your microphone. Actually, I'm asking you to unmute and then you should be able to unmute yourself.
Here's invisible Lynn, which might actually disappear because my internet is unstable, even though I paid my bills. Well, so do any of you know what the GINI index is? G-I-N-I. Well, this is the wealth disparity index. Zero is the best, 100 is the worst. The United States is something like 47. Now, what's been going on in Boulder? Your big crisis of affordable housing is you build and you build. You okayed Odell the other day. How dare you? How dare you? Odell is an abomination. All of this affordable housing. At Alpine and Balsam, at the Balsam, for 3,500 square feet and a two-car garage right in the heart of Boulder for $3 million bucks. Who knows how much they cost? And, and then he has this affordable housing, 20% than he has to do. As if that even comes close. And then, then we get federal funds, the Lytech funds, the opportunity zone, don't we? We get, give capital gains relief for developers from out of town to come here, rape our town, basically, rip it and reap and drive up our housing costs. And next week, you know, I have to run and pay $2,700 to Paul Wiseman. And it's up, up, up every time Bill Holkey.
Lynn, we seem to have lost you. Is that right? Cindy, can you hear Lynn? Lynn, we seem to have lost you. I'm going to pause the timer for a moment. So it looks like we have lost her from the meeting potentially.
She's still listed as a participant, but I don't, can't hear. She's muted, though.
Oh, well, let's unmute her. Lynn, we're going to re-unmute you. Somehow you became muted again. You should be able to unmute yourself. I'm going to try that one more time. Lynn, are you able to unmute yourself? All right. Well, we will remember that Lynn had one minute and 10 seconds left on the timer. Let's go to our next participant. I have Steve Tell Dean. Steve, I am coming to you. I'm asking you to unmute.
Question, that is, I missed the very first part of this. So is this like general comments or are there going to be comments after you do specific agenda items or what?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I think he's asking for what, what the protocol is.
Yes.
This is general public comment for items that are not on the public hearing agenda. So if you want to comment on either of the concept plans on the agenda for tonight, this is not the right time. You can do that after the concept.
That's what I was questioning. So I'll lower my hand now and do that later then.
Okay.
Thank you. We appreciate that. I did have another hand up, but I'm not seeing that hand up now. The name was Joni. I'm going to give you just a couple of moments, Joni, to see if you'd like to raise your hand again. And I'm seeing no other hands raised at this point. I do feel we should return to Lynn one more time just to see if she is able to unmute. But I am no longer seeing her on the list.
So I don't either.
Yeah. Must have gone out. So I believe we can close open comment at this time.
Okay, then. The next item is to go over a discussion of dispositions, planning board call-ups, and continuations. Do not believe that we have any call-ups or continuations, dispositions on the agenda tonight. Is that correct, Cindy?
That's correct.
Great. So let's go straight to the first public hearing item. The agenda item is a concept plan review for an approximately 5.5 acre property at 5691 South Boulder Road in advance of a full annexation application. The concept is illustrated with four new single-family lots and remodeling of an existing single-family home at the east end of the site, reviewed under case number LUR 20200014. And I'm going to turn it over to Charles to introduce the staff member who's going to present the item.
Great, thanks very much. Good evening, members of the board. Elaine McLaughlin, who has served as the case manager on this application, is going to present staff's analysis this evening.
Great, thank you, Charles, and good evening, everyone. I'm going to just boot up the PowerPoint here so they're with me for a moment. First for this evening, we'll go over a brief overview of where we're planning to go with this. And so we'll look at the context, the, the location of the site, and then we'll discuss key issues. And again, I'm going to start, there we go, with the PowerPoint. Just as a brief overview for your concept plan, as most of you know, in concept plan, we look at broad aspects of the land use and circulation as well as architecture. And there's no formal action of approval or denial. Rather, it's an opportunity to provide feedback to the applicant. And so, beginning from sort of the 30,000-foot level, this particular site's located in essentially the southeast corner of Boulder. And to orient us a little bit further, a little closer look, we can see that it's near East Boulder Rec Center, the South Boulder Creeks to the east, and foothills is on the west of the site or towards the west of the site. Onto the existing 5.5 acre site. The applicant's illustrating a concept sketch of anticipation of future annexation that shows the four single-family lots. And two of those are intended to be earmarked as permanently affordable. And then the remodel of the existing residence, which is off to the east, along with a central conservation easement. And the applicant also provided architectural sketches, sort of character sketches for the residential. The surrounding context includes East Boulder Rec Center. And there's a new dog park not far away. Directly north of the site is land that was recently purchased by City. OSMP is part of an area known as Hogan-Pancast. To the east is South Boulder Creek, along with drainage ditches and trails. And south is Greenbelt Meadows neighborhood. West is an estate residential parcel that's in the county. And the northwest is the main Hogan-Pancast site. It's about 20 acres, recently purchased by City Parks and Recreation. The site itself is also currently within Boulder County and has been in hay production for several decades. There's two ditches that traverse the site towards the east end, and there's an existing single-family residence. Evidently, the, the residence was moved to this site in the 1960s by the applicant's family. And you can also see there's several outbuildings and trailers that are on the site intended to be removed with annexation. And access is from a tree-lined street off 55th. And you can see there's another row of trees that align 55th itself. The BBCP land use, which determines future zoning on the site, is low-density residential. It's noted in the comp plan as the most prevalent land use in the city, and it consists mostly of single-family detached units. And the densities range from 2 to 6 the use per acre. Under the low-density residential land use for future annexation purposes, there's three categories of zoning that could be considered on the property, including residential estate shown here in the light yellow. It's at a very low density with single-family detached at a minimum of 15,000 square feet per dwelling unit. And as you can see, there's no estate residential zone property anywhere near the site at this point. RL1 is also zoning that's compatible with low-density residential land use, similar density but at a minimum 7,000 square foot per dwelling unit. The nearest zone, RL1, is at Kiweden Meadows, about a quarter mile west. And then RL2, it's more of a medium density as small lots, minimum 6,000 square feet per dwelling unit. The adjacent Greenbelt Meadows neighborhood is RL2. And lots there average approximately 4,000 square feet per dwelling unit. And then we're going to talk about potential zoning a little bit further under key issue two. So within the concept plan review, an understanding of opportunities and constraints for transportation is discussed. And in this regard, it's important to note that 55th Street's considered a collector's street under the city's TMP. And we're going to talk a little bit more about that in key issue three. And then, as shown in the transit map on the left, the site's about a quarter mile away from three different RTD bus stops that serve the Dash and the 225. The bike pedestrian map on the right shows that the site's adjacent to a number of regional multi-use paths along South Boulder Creek corridor, regional connections, if you will. The concept plan criteria also addresses environmental opportunities and constraints. And as such, the site's adjacent to an area that's been identified in Boulder County Comprehensive Plan as the South Boulder Creek Natural Area. And this primarily, as you can see, aligns South Boulder Creek Flood Plain. And it's an area known for high biodiversity, where there's wetlands, critical wildlife habitat, and rare plant area. And while the site itself isn't identified in the mapping, the adjacency does require that any future development on the property minimize disturbances. And then, there's also an area of habitat for the federally listed Preble Meadow Jumping Mouse. And it's a portion of that subject property that's in an area that's been defined by both Boulder County and OSMP as a mouse management area. And that's where habitats essentially related to riparian areas. So staff noted in the comments that, given that proximity to known habitat, the applicant will need to consult with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service before any activities could potentially affect that habitat. And then also, east of the site is Gebhardt Property that was recently the subject of an OSMP management plan that was intended to ensure access into the areas defined and taking a look at how to access the site, given the rare plant community. And then the flood mapping on the site shows that most of the sites within the 500-year flood zone, there's an area of 100-year in the north corner and a sliver on the east that's conveyance zone. The 100-year flood zone is part of the regulated flood plain within the City of Boulder. And there's currently about 15% of the city that's in the 100-year flood zone. And it includes about 2,500 individual structures. So any development in the 100-year would require flood plain development permit that's subject to flood regulations. So for key issue number one, the concept plan was reviewed with annexation policies. And so for policy 1.09, it notes that urban growth must add significant value to the community. Improve quality of life and annexation must provide significant community benefits. So in that regard, the applicant's proposing those four residential lots, and it's a five-and-a-half acre property. So two of them are proposed to be permanently affordable as a community benefit, along with a conservation easement, as we've noted. And in staff's review of the concept, it was noted that there's no evidence to provide or to indicate what the open space values were that were intended to be preserved in that area of the hay field by a conservation easement that essentially requires that the city hold it and monitor it, enforce that, the use of the easement. So generally, open space values include elements such as significant native ecosystems or scenic resources. So as project plans progress, staff would need to understand the meaning of the conservation easement. And then it's important to note, when annexing property that has additional development potential, and that's based on the density of the comp plan land use, Annexation Policy 1.160 says that the emphasis is placed on the provision of permanently affordable residential units. So the number is commensurate, how many you put on the site is essentially commensurate with the benefits that are offered to the community in exchange for annexation. And this table was put together in the memo and it helps to illustrate that there's development potential both on half of the site, if you were to view it that way, as well as the entire site under that BBCP low-density residential land use. So in the first column, you see that there's low-density residential as three zoning districts, and those each have different density qualifiers. So the allowed density shown in the second column and the third and fourth columns. And it's clear that there is additional development potential, even if it's only on the half of the site as well as the full site. And because there's additional development potential with just two units planned as permanently affordable, staff notes that other community benefits should be explored. And in, in looking at the site, one way the applicant could consider generating additional community benefit and potentially still use the same building envelope that was shown for those, really estate-sized residential, is by creating duplex units. So thereby, creating a total of eight units instead of four, which in turn would create a few more affordable units. And in the memo, we talk about that there's many examples of contemporary parrot homes that have the same type of building footprint, mass and scale, as a single-family detached home. And we also illustrated that there are similar characteristics to the adjacent neighborhood. So given that there may be other options to explore in the site, the applicant's encouraged, as I noted, to consider greater community benefit. Then it's also helpful to take a look at the community benefits offered under the most recent residential annexations on properties that had that additional development potential. Some of you were here when we looked at 90 and 96 Rappahoe. It is a larger site. But it did have 50% of the residential units were, let me go back one, 45% of the residential units were permanently affordable. And that was to different levels of AMI. And then there was dedication of nearly three acres of connected open space, landmarking of historic buildings, and then provision of land for September school. So it was a fairly robust annexation package. And then, again, for this 5469 South Boulder Road called Rose Annexation, smaller site than what we're looking at this evening, but again, 50% affordable. So six of the 12 units that were proposed, there were site improvements along with that and right-of-way and open space annexation. So again, this is just a comparison to understand where recent annexations. So then, what are the options for access onto the site based on BCS? This is key issue number three. And as we've noted, the current site access is taken off 55th into the site. And it's a relatively bucolic tree-lined driveway, really like an alley of sorts that was established decades ago by the owner's family. And the applicant would like to retain that as an access point. And in the review comments, staff noted that the design and construction standards require that access off a collector be separated from existing driveways by 150 feet. And in this case, the existing site is about 120 from that existing driveway that's on the west side of 55th. Since that time since, staff has indicated that a variance to DCS could be considered, and that would be through the annexation process that could potentially allow for the existing access point to remain. And then it's important to note that required public notice was given in the form of 102 mail notices, along with newspaper notification, assigned posting. And then, public notices were published in news from City Hall. And so the public notification requirements were met. Staff noted that there's about 13 comments received. And since the packet was prepared, about three additional were received that you should also have available to you. And that's staff's presentation. Could I answer any questions?
Thanks, Elaine. Nice job there. I'm going to open up my participants list. And I'd appreciate it if planning board members would raise hands if they want to ask questions of staff. And I'll call on you in order. This is just a time for planning board members to ask. And John, I always give John a mulligan because he's old school. You can raise your physical hand, John, here first. Don't forget to unmute yourself, though.
Thank you. So I'm just wondering, in your discussions with the applicant, whether you discussed the various options for providing affordable housing for both onsite and off-site options? And what, how, how that went? Because I'm still trying to understand how staff developed this recommendation for, for example, duplexes for those four new, new lots that were being proposed.
Well, I'm going to suggest that Brett Fernheber, who's here from Housing on the Line, address that.
Good evening, planning board. For that question. So typically, annexations, we work towards onsite, affordable housing as sort of the first choice. Particularly, annexations have been a good way for us to receive homeownership units as well. It's been sort of a good fit for that. We really don't get, at a cash-in-lou option or a, an off-site option as a secondary choice if, if onsite doesn't work. And, and again, annexation is a, is an agreement between parties. And that gives us the, the ability to, you know, direct in that way.
Also, may I jump in? One of the things that came clear when we got the concept plan is that the applicant was proposing the two onsite units as well as a conservation easement. And at the time, with open space and mountain parks, and I think Bethany Collins is available as well this evening, open space and mountain parks found that the, there wasn't a meaningful contribution to this site being a conservation easement. In other words, it didn't necessarily provide for open space values that we normally would see when there's a conservation easement that needs to be managed by staff. And so, the, was, is there a way that we could look at more meaningful types of? More meaningful types of residential land use on the site or other alternatives? And again, the best part about concept plan is we can explore many alternatives through the discussion.
So, thank you.
Real quick, John, before you continue. Brenda, while John's asking the next question. Could you rename all the planning board members PB instead of planning board? Because I can't see their names. All I see is planning board and I don't know who to call on. John, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I was just wondering whether staff had discussed with the applicant these, these issues. For example, the location and size of the conservation easement or the various options for providing affordable housing. And other than what we have seen in this application.
It was, it was discussed in the context of a comment letter. So that was provided to the applicant after they submitted the concept plan.
Okay, thank you.
Harmon, also a point of clarification. Because of the format that we're in on the meeting today. And the status of the board members in the platform, they actually don't have a virtual hand raising button.
Oh, okay, then I'm just gonna try my best then. Sarah, go ahead.
Sorry.
Thanks, John. I appreciate you bringing up that question. It was also one of mine, my clarifying questions. But Elaine, I had a follow up question. Sorry, I'm looking at my notes on a, on a separate. Computer, separate monitor. I was a little confused. At one point in the staff memo, you note that a portion of the property is in the mouse management area. And that the owner will need to consult with the Fish and Wildlife Service. And you also mentioned that the site's in the South Boulder floodplain and adjacent to open space. But then later in your analysis and issue, key issue two, you note. And I'm quoting here, no open space values were identified at present, including those related to scenic vistas or habitat conservation. So I'm just, I was, I read those two statements as a bit contradictory and I was just wondering if you could clarify a bit.
Sure, and I may have Bethany Collins join me as well, but. The point is there's been no surveys or habitat found on the property as yet. So it's in a mouse management area as it's. The type of habitat where you would find Preville's mouse. However, actual habitat and actual mice were found. Near South Boulder Creek, not on the property, but I, I think it's because of the context and the potential for habitat. And I don't know if Bethany, you have anything else you want to add to that?
Seeing if I can unmute myself. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, this is Bethany Collins. I'm the real estate supervisor for open, open space and mountain parks. The, the areas that you guys have, are asking about and have identified as part of the. Mouse management area and the valuable, you know, floodplain riparian corridor that's protected by the. Under the open space lands to the, to the east of this property are basically on the eastern boundary of this property. So the, the. Responds to, again, the concept. Plan.
Bethany, can I ask you to? Just turn off your video, hit stop video because.
Oh, sure. Yeah. Oh, that's funny. Sure, no problem. So again, we were responding to the concept plan as proposed and the location of the conservation easement as proposed. Or as, as, you know. Diagrammed on the concept plan and that is down the center of the property. So it does not include areas of this, the, the mouse management plan or potential, you know. Or the floodplain areas or areas that are, could potentially be seen as valuable resource areas. If we were, you know, offered a different. You know, location for that conservation easement, it might result in a different response. But as, in the location as proposed, it doesn't present a, of interest or of. A benefit to the city.
Okay, thank you. I really appreciate that clarification.
I see Lisa, she's had her hand up.
Thank you, Harmon. So I had a similar question. This might still come to you, Bethany. Could we pull back up? There was a slide and I'm sorry, I don't know exactly which one it is, but that kind of showed the potential. Jumping mouse habitat and that also kind of showed where the 100 year and 500 year flood were, if I'm recalling correctly. I was having, I just wanted to kind of compare that to the proposed development. I'm trying to understand where a conservation easement. Might, might kind of be more interesting to open space. So I guess that's my question to staff is. I know we've got that major, I think you called it a connector for 55th. Where, and then we've got some water there, where, where is the potentially more valuable habitat or more of interest to OSMP?
And again, it's probably easier to be able to respond to something, you know, that's, that, that is proposed. But, you know, if we were kind of spitballing as you are, are asking to be done, it, it really would be the, the. Likely the eastern edge of the property and the adjacency and the idea of, you know, removing and restoring the existing home or. I mean, the removing the existing home and restoring that area, the area that is adjacent to those valuable resources and the existing opens. You know, the existing open space. Gabhard property to the east.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. I was just trying to understand because some of the proposed development area is adjacent to that busy street. And then I know there's the existing building envelopes.
Right.
Properties are, so.
Yeah, and things we look at, you know, again, open space purposes, adjacency to existing open space lands and, you know, the, the. As, you know, as it, as it sits right now, this is. Looking at this as a, as a conservation easement that looks more like, you know, a HOA style park or, you know, a residential kind of. Open space or park, park area that would be managed more of by, you know, or, or held as open space by homeowners and the, and the neighborhood itself. Not, not as, not considered open space under, with these purposes.
Thank you for that, Bethany. That's what I thought too. I thought that looks like an awfully nice little private park, which isn't bad necessarily, but.
No, not at all.
But it's kind of what it looks like.
Hold on. Okay, so do I see any other hands? Peter Vitale, I think Peter needs to speak.
Thank you. I'd like to hear a little more about the tree alley and the 120 versus 150 foot offset. Stealing the show. So yeah, I'm curious about the tree alley and. The city's position on the 120 versus 150, if I'm reading that right.
Thanks for that question, Peter. And the, in the review comments, we did note that. Because it's considered a. Collector road, which tends to have a higher volume or higher speed. There are these offset requirements of 150 feet from driveway to driveway or access. And in this particular case, it's about 120 feet. But in looking at it with transportation, it appears as though it's possible, given the. Amount of traffic or trip generation that would occur on the site that you could through annexation, consider. What's essentially a variance to the DCS to make that access point work.
So it would. As, it would remain as proposed with the little tree alley entrance and then you would. Cut north to access the proposed homes instead of there being. A new access point in the middle of the site.
Correct. If they apply for annexation with that request, modify the DCS or to vary the DCS.
Okay, great. And then the only other main, well, another main staff comment was. Let's see more houses here. Is that about right?
Well, short of having other community benefit. And again, in annexation, we look for needs that need to be fulfilled in the community, in the city. And clearly, one of the most pressing needs is affordable housing. So. When there's additional development potential, typically annexations. Look, or we look toward affordable housing as a strong community benefit.
Thank you.
Is there anybody? David, please. Sorry, Sarah, I'm gonna get everybody before I get you again.
Sorry to jump in, Sarah. I just was looking at the, the fact that these are potentially. A little bit larger, single family homes and I was wondering the calculation for affordable. Is probably a little different for a larger home. Is it, is it based on, you know, the number of bedrooms or anything, or is it? Still, still the same as with, with the smaller homes?
Thank you, David. I'll jump in here. So it's, it's based on the, the number of bedrooms. And there's typically square footage that's related to that as well. And then it's also based on the AMI. Typically on annexations like this that are smaller annexations. Will see something from an AMI standpoint that probably ranges between 80 and 120% of AMI. Simply because it's too difficult for developers to create affordable housing at the 60% AMI level. You know, for, for smaller developments. For these, however, if they were to be. As large, larger homes as being at least anticipated in what we've seen so far. We don't have affordable housing units that are at that scale. And I think what we were looking for was to match or, you know, similar to what's the adjacency to the south. And that, that development.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else before I call on Sarah again? Please unmute yourself, Pete.
Takes me a little bit to find the remote.
Good job.
Yeah. Thank you, Kurt, for addressing that particular issue. That's, that was my, my, my biggest interest was in the whole of the mismatch in regards to. What is adjacent to this property and what is being proposed? And given that there is this discussion about affordable housing. I'm wondering if, if there's an alternative that will make it more on par to what is near. The, the development right below it and how will that change in terms of, you know, the affordability? Should you go say smaller?
And I can jump in, Kurt, and I could tag team on this one. I, I think that the point is that. In trying to work with what the applicant had proposed in the concept plan. Staff noted that for the size of the building envelope that's proposed on these existing lots, you could get duplexes that would actually. Have the exact same building footprint. Now, you could do smaller lots, but there would be more lots. And one thought is to go onto the east side of that cul-de-sac that's shown where currently nothing is, is shown. Additional lots, but you know, some of this will probably be dependent on future. Wetland studies or any type of habitat analysis that occurs and how far you could go east. Now, right now, they're only looking at about a quarter to a fifth of the site that's actually had any kind of footprint on it. So of course, the, the more lots you add, the more you move on to the rest of the site.
And following, following up on that, there is the land sitting to the west, northwest part. That is slotted to have. Larger density development. Because I was wondering if the fact that there is going to be more housing at a higher density coming on board, at least planned for the future. Having this lower density nearby may be something that, of a balance that you have thought maybe be okay?
And.
Did you have that discussion?
Could you clarify where you're talking about the other density that you're talking about?
Yeah, as I understand it on them, I'm trying to look at the map back up. There's a. Personal land, northern part from there, I thought. In the, what earlier, the discussion, they gave it a name, I forget. Where they talked about there will be some development in the future.
Pete, so you're not talking about Hogan Pancast, are you?
Yes, I think that was it.
That's not going to be developed, so. Go beyond.
Yeah, because there was a mention of, of a number of houses in the development. And I was thinking, maybe this is some, some sort of concern that you will have just too many, too many homes near. So this is not going to happen.
Right. No, that, that particular property was recently purchased by the city Parks and Recreation.
Also, when he said that it was by Parks and Recreation, I didn't kind of connect it, that piece that.
Yes.
No longer going to be a development.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Because that was the one, one piece I didn't quite get.
Okay. I think I can go to Sarah now.
Thank you. Great questions and my, mine actually is a follow up to David's question. It has to do with. The staff memo seemed to really direct us towards duplexes, but I am curious under our, if, if it were ultimately zoned RL2. Wouldn't that allow for, or couldn't that allow for smaller lots and smaller single family homes as well? We're not, it doesn't have to be either these big houses or duplexes. It could be a combination of. Okay, thank you. I just wanted that clarification.
John can go up again? John, do you have a question for staff before we move on?
No, it's been answered. Thank you.
Okay, great. Any other questions or can we go to public comment? Sorry, applicant. Sorry about that. Any other comments, questions, I should say questions by the board? Okay, then let's queue up the applicant presentation now. Brenda, if you would, or Elaine, I don't know who's got it, but go ahead.
And it might take a minute to just boot up. There we go.
And Elaine, who do we need at the microphone?
Liz Hanson.
All right, Liz, I am asking you to unmute. And also inviting you to start your video. And Liz, you'll let us know if there are others on the applicant list that you would like to join you in speaking.
Yes, actually Joe Kent will be joining me in the presentation, so he'll, he'll join very quickly after I start. So if you want to have Joe join us.
Joe, I have invited you to unmute and start your video.
Okay, we're here.
Great. So, good evening, planning board members, city staff and community members. I'm Liz Hanson. I'm a planning consultant that's working on the applicant's team. And I'm working with the property owners, Joe and Carrie Kent on this concept plan application. Along with architect David Beal and engineers Don Ash and Rich Fulmer, who are also part of our team and on the call tonight as well. Joe Kent, whose family has owned this site for decades and I will be doing the presentation. I'll begin by reviewing very briefly the site context. Next slide. So the, this is the site context plan that was submitted as part of the application as a requirement. I'm not going to go into very much detail because Elaine did a great job of summarizing the neighborhood. Next slide. So our slides here will just point out what the surrounding land uses are that Elaine noted. Next slide. And then also the fact that, as was mentioned, Hogan Pancast site was purchased from the city of Boulder. Were surrounded by RL1, RL2, public and open space zoning and all of the nearby residential uses are currently single family. Next slide. And now I'll turn the presentation over to Joe Kent and then I will take it back to him. Joe, it's all yours.
All right, thanks, Liz. Good evening, planning board members. I've got my wife here, Carrie, with me. So, next slide and I'll go over this quick. I grew up on the property. We've lived there for five decades, or my parents did. The house was moved from baseline in 36 in 1963 and the name Peacock Place. and the name Peacock Place came, there were peacocks with the residents, when my father bought the house. Part of the deal was, is the peacocks had to go with the house, and we've had peacocks there ever since. Next slide. It's, again, Elaine went over most of this. There are about two hundred and fifty trees that have been planted on the site over the last fifty years. We would like to annex the city for various reasons, but one of them, the well water during the flood, the groundwater change, and the well has a lot of rust in it, so we'd like city water and sewer. Next slide. This is looking north, along Fifty-Fifth, at the trees that are right along the street. Next. This is, again, looking down the driveway, the one thing that I'll throw in. Mom, when we were growing up, she said she wanted to live long enough to see the trees on both sides of the driveway canopy over the top, and she did. Both mom and dad lived till they were both ninety-three years old. Next. Again, this is looking to the west, about halfway down the driveway. Next. There's a picture of the house, which we've seen earlier, that we'd like to remodel, and keep about the same footprint. Next. And again, there's one of the one-male peacock that we still have, is there. So, next. That is looking at the site where the houses would be built. That's looking west toward Fifty-Fifth. Next. That is looking north, or excuse me, that's looking south from the north side of the property at Greenbelt Meadows. Again, this is where the houses would be built near Fifty-Fifth. Next. Now, the one thing that is there that got put in is a storm sewer that runs along the north side of the property of Greenbelt Meadows and the south side of our property. And that storm sewer is, can't be cleaned from Greenbelt Meadows, even though it's a Greenbelt Meadows storm sewer. So, city utilities have cleaned that storm sewer from our property. We've allowed them to come down our driveway to clean it for the last thirty or thirty, thirty years, twenty-five years. Next. Again, there's a driveway looking to the east and to the west. Next. There is a pond on the property where we do have Canadian geese, where there's two sets of families there now. Next. That's looking at where the, from the house where the houses would be built. This is where we would remodel the house. Next. And again, as Elaine pointed out, it was a commercial, we had a trailer rental company that we ran from there. We have been cleaning it up over the last ten years. My father collected a lot of stuff. We've cleaned up a lot, but by the time the project is done, all the commercial will be removed from the property. Next. And lastly, there is a gate that city utilities put in right on the east side to access the Gebhardt property, because it was easier for them to access it through our driveway. So, we agreed to have them put in the gate so that they could use our driveway to access that property to work on the storm sewer that you saw there. And guys, as you've seen here, we want to, I want to move back there. I grew up there. My kids grew up with their grandparents there. So, that's our goal, is to move in and get back on the property. You can see, we don't want to overdevelop it. The neighborhood likes it the way it stands. It's a nice area for them. The neighbors walk over there where it is. Anyway, I'm gonna throw it back to Liz. I don't want to take any more of your time. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. So, the next part of the presentation, I'm going to talk about our concept plan, and also talk about some of the issues we're dealing with. One thing I'll note, maybe in response to some of the planning board questions, is in a concept plan, there's not a whole lot of back and forth. So, we made a concept plan, the city gave us comments. We had a nice response from the cities, some questions that we had, but it's not an opportunity to really make any changes. So, the comments we've received at this point will use as we move into annexation and site review. So, this shows a little bit of kind of how this project has gotten to this point, with an annexation feasibility study in twenty eighteen, and then the Kents really wanted to get as much feedback from city staff as possible. So, we had multiple meetings with these departments, really trying to get information to inform the concept plan application. At that time, we did not hear recommendations for attached units or RL2 zoning, but we listened to all the feedback we had. Next slide. So, this is the concept plan, and what I'll do next is go through some of the key elements of the concept plan. Next. So, as Elaine has mentioned, we'd like to use the existing driveway from Fifty-Fifth Street, using, really enhancing the use of that part of the site, the double tree canopy that Joe showed, remodel and the existing single-family home, so Joe can move with his family into the house that he grew up in. And then, at the front of the property, you'll see four single-family lots that were, are being proposed. I'm going to talk a little bit more about the size of the homes proposed. I think there might be a little bit clarification needed, but most importantly, no lots are proposed in the hundred-year flood plain, no basements, and this obviously is a starting point for our conversation. Next slide. So, we also are looking to try to keep as many of the trees as possible. It's been estimated there are about two hundred and fifty trees on the property. The conservation easement, we really, we got feedback that the city did not like this conservation easement, but we haven't really had a discussion as to how we could change it so that it could make community benefit. That's something we'll pursue, and also to maintain the existing pond on the property. Next. So, the proposed units are two affordable and two market-rate units. This shows the size of the units that are being proposed. So, larger units for the market rate, smaller units for the affordable. You know, we are open to looking at the size of the units and the lots, but we are proposing that there be a new drive that comes off the existing drive. And I'll just briefly note some of the reasons to maintain that existing driveway. Next. So, even after redevelopment, the benefits of aligning the curbs across Fifty-Fifth are pretty minimal. They're, you know, besides using the existing driveway for the character reasons, if the neighbor across Fifty-Fifth redevelops, the plan will be affected by the existing site conditions. And also, it's closer to that Fifty-Fifth Street curve, which we understood was a safety concern. Next slide. So, briefly, the existing entry to the site is on the right side of this photo. Next. This is the property across Fifty-Fifth. You can see the house is very close to the front of the property, which would provide some limitations. There's actually a drive on the south side of this property that would line up very well with the Kent's driveway. Next. And again, seeing here the distance of the house. Next. And this is the area where the staff has suggested an alternative of adding a driveway. Next. So, we understand that annexation is a, is a big deal in Boulder. Boulder doesn't annex a whole lot of property. And so, community benefit is something we understand is required, and we will be negotiating community benefit during the annexation process. You see our proposal at this point, and that may evolve as we move forward with site review and annexation. Next. The Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan is key in any annexation. Elaine's memo went through the many policies that might apply. We'd like to highlight Policy 2.10, because it talks about working with neighborhoods, enhancing neighborhood character and livability. We feel like, given the feedback we've received from the neighborhood so far, this will be an important policy to look at at the annexation process. Next. So, just a note on density. We are proposing RL1, which is consistent with the comprehensive plan. We understand there's a mix between RL1 and RL2 in the neighborhood, and we've been listening to that neighborhood feedback, but it seems like, given the environmental sensitive issues on this property, which are many, that single-family homes might be more appropriate, and also there are no attached units nearby. Next. A note about transportation. We've submitted a transportation report, and our transportation engineer is on the call if you have questions. Basically, the traffic volumes would change very little, and have very little impact to the traveling public. We'd add about sixty-five vehicles a day to the existing trips of fifteen hundred vehicles a day. Next. Utilities is going to be one of the more challenging issues for us moving forward. There are two sanitary sewer options that we presented in the packet. I'll note that utility plans are not required as part of concept plan, but we wanted to get feedback at this stage, if possible. We did not receive staff comments on this issue, but we certainly welcome planning board feedback. Next. So, the first option, and I really want to emphasize, we have not discussed this option with Greenbelt Meadows, but it would involve taking service from a manhole that is in the outlaw on the east side of Greenbelt Meadows. Next. And then, option two would require city open space disposal, and I know that that is a very difficult thing to obtain. There are many criteria. But I do want to note on the right-hand photo that the existing manhole in open space is sixty feet to the edge of this property. So, it is the closest available sewer service, and that area has had some disturbance to it. So, it's something we'd at least like to have on the table and have additional discussion. We had a very helpful meeting with open space staff, and we'd like to look at that issue further. Next. So, wetlands is something that, again, we will need to work on prior to site review and annexation. We have had an initial meeting with a consultant, and that was fairly recent. That meeting tells us that there are likely wetlands on this property, and the location of those wetlands will likely impact what type of site review plan we can move forward with. So, more information will inform that plan, but it's something that we understand is a key issue here. Next. Groundwater is also a concern of the neighborhood. We've heard that at the Hogan-Pancast application and here. This proposal is for slab-on-gray construction, no basements, no crawl spaces. We do not want to disturb the groundwater, and certainly, this will be something that we will look at at technical document review. Next. The troubleous mouse, the endangered species that was mentioned, I won't go into too much. We understand that the status of the property related to the research that's been done, we will confer with a wildlife specialist. This is not a specialist finding, but the Kent family tells me that since the early sixties, they've had a cat, and they never brought home a mouse. So, there hasn't been on my scene, it's hard to say, there hasn't been a mouse seen that on the properties, but, you know, we certainly want, certainly want to make sure we're careful with this issue, because it is an endangered species. Next.
Liz, I do want to clarify that we have reached the fifteen-minute time limit. I apologize for not explaining what that would look like at the top of your presentation.
Can I just wrap up in thirty seconds? Okay. I'm next. I'll just leave this slide up. We wanted to meet with the neighbors before we drew any concept plan, and we had a great meeting on January twenty-seventh. You have that in your packet. Can you skip the next few slides, please? And go to applicant summary. So, this summarizes the, some of the zoning issues I mentioned. Next. And the last comment I'd like to make is that we understand the city's desire to add density when annexing, but a site with environmentally sensitive features, adjacent to open space on two sides, surrounded by single-family homes, it just doesn't seem like the right place to add too much density with an annexation, but we really look forward to having the planning board's comments tonight, and happy to answer any questions you have.
Thanks for wrapping up, Liz. Appreciate the presentation as well. I just lost my screen. Can anybody hear me?
We can. We can hear you, Harmon.
Okay, I don't know why I lost my screen. There we are. Okay, okay. So, planning board members, if you have any questions for the applicant, now would be the time to ask before we go on to public comment. Okay, John Gerstle?
Yeah, I'd be interested in learning what sorts of other options for conservation easements the applicant might be considering, having, having heard the staff thoughts on their proposal.
Um, I think the fact is, it's a little too early for us, John, to be able to explore that, because we really want to have a conversation with the staff and not just, you know, bring forward a site review with another proposal. Obviously, some of the issues that Bethany raised are important to consider, but, you know, you've heard Joe talk about this house and the placement of the house, so it seems like there's a potential conflict there. If there's a way to do the conservation easement in another location on the property that would allow that family house to be maintained, that's, that's something that we're, we're open to, but we haven't, we haven't hit that step in our process. Any planning board input you can give us, we would certainly consider that.
Thank you.
Who else? Lupita?
Yes, that was also my concern, or my interest, to find out more about options. It seemed to me that the house was moved already in the past. Had the owners talked to you about the possibility of maybe moving the house west, closer to the developer section, and opening the space closer to the open space, which, to me, seems to have quite a bit of challenges, and leave that kind of like, be more harmonious with what is already there. It just seems to me that maybe, maybe this is something that you probably talked about, given that, like I said, the house has been moved before, and the challenges of having that open space in between the proposed development and the actual home of the owners.
Well, I'll let Joe and Carrie answer that question, because it's their house.
Yes, I know. I mean, I'm wondering if they haven't had that discussion. It would be good to hear.
And we have not had that discussion, and I don't think the feasibility now of moving it again is a possibility. I think the cost to do that, you know, back when it was moved in nineteen sixty-three, that was a possibility, but I don't think now that that's a realistic possibility. It was an interesting idea, but I just, I don't think it works.
Okay, any other questions of the applicant? All right, Brenda, if you and Cindy could work together to get public comment together for us, that would be great. Do we know how many people from the public are planning on speaking?
Now would be a great time for those who would like to speak in response to this application to go ahead and raise your hand with the raise hand function. Again, that's found by scrolling your mouse over your menu, either at the top or the bottom of your screen, clicking on the participant icon. That will open the participant box, and then you'll see a raise hand button there in that box. Terrific. I've got several people. I do have, I'm going to just ask for your names now, so that I can change them before you speak. Joni, I will need your last name, and Fire Swan, I will need a full name for you as well. And we know your last name, Lynn. We will ask you to say it and spell it, each of you, as you speak. I am setting up the timer now, and we will share screen with the timer. Three minutes, Chairman?
Yeah, three minutes a person, and again, if you can, yeah, thanks, Lynn, I appreciate that. Joni, if you can go on, and Fire Swan, if you can go on to the little blue... to the little blue dialogue box that you can drop down and hit rename and give your full name. That would be great before you speak.
You're also welcome to chat that to me, and I can change it for you if it be, if for some reason it's tricky for you to change it on your own. Great. So we currently have six hands raised. So we will start with Lynn Siegel, with Stephen Teldine coming after Lynn. So then I'll unmute you. We'll ask you to spell your first and last name, and then I will start the timer when you begin your comments. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi, Maran. Timer's not on. Oh, well, I'll start now. I'll get free time. To start with, I wonder why you're even entertaining this whole subject because, to my understanding from talking to the applicant yesterday and other folks associated with this group, I understand that the well went bad, the original well went bad. I don't know when, years ago, years ago. But they put in a new well, and then in 50 years, that well got bad. I was told by Joe, not because of the flood, but now I'm hearing tonight that there is some blaming of the flood on the rust in their well. I don't know about the septic, but why wouldn't the city want to entertain annexing them and quantifying all the expenses of giving them piped water and sewer and let them figure out if they want to pay that, they have to pay that? What does it cost the city? Why does the city have to get a benefit out of people annexing necessarily? Because the city's going to get sales tax revenue from them. So, and if they don't want to annex, or if they don't feel they need to annex, they could dig another well and last it for another 50 years. What's the problem with that? You have a well that lasts 50 years. Now, and maybe they could have the city pay for part of it if the flood from 2013 was an excuse because CU is the problem of the flood of 2013. If we'd have done 20 years ago, the resolution was CU and the CU South Campus, which now CU is going to be half of their campus because of this COVID thing, they're downsizing, they're never going to build a campus anyway. And we're spending all these hours of city staff on this issue today with this annexation and on that issue, and for what? As far as the mouse, just because the mouse isn't on the property and the cat hasn't caught one, this is invading into the space of the mouse. There should be their house. My understanding from Joe was they wanted their house. They didn't want four more houses. They didn't want 12 more houses. They wanted their house, the ability to remodel it and to get annexed because of this well issue. That's my understanding. I'm not putting words in Joe's mouth, but I asked him a number of times, and this seemed to come up. This is an area next to the floodplain. It doesn't matter if it's not right on the floodplain. It matters because it is extra space that is taking up land that water is diverted around when we have a big flood. And knowing how we dealt with the 2013, we're not going to deal with this thing with CU for years either, and there's going to be more trouble. And there's horrendous amounts of city money. And we are in a friggin' depression right now. We should not be spending our money this way. Let's see. Talking about bedrooms, you know, tell me about Dan Cruz's house with 16,000 square feet and maybe two bedrooms. Oh, yes, that's a good use of land. You know, it shouldn't be by the bedrooms. You can fill up the pre-existing houses in Boulder if you want affordable housing. That's what you do for affordable housing. Done. Zero. I have plenty more to say, but whatever.
Thank you, Lynn. Stephen Teldine, I'm coming to you with Joni Cardone next. Stephen, as a reminder, we'll ask you to spell your first and last name, and then we'll start the timer when you begin your comments. You should be able to unmute now.
Okay, I think I'm unmuting. My name is Steve Telleen. Steve, S-T-E-V-E, and Telleen, T-E-L-L-E-E-N. And also, I probably need to note that I'm the president of SEVNO. So I'm ready to start. So one thing I'd like to say is, is I would like to thank the Kents, at least, for proactively meeting with the neighbors for what they would find acceptable on this ahead of time. I think that's something the city staff should be doing before they get as far in as they are, even when they're making their comments. Speaking of the conservation easement, just quickly, one of the things, and I understand the sentimentality and whatever, but one of the things that would make that easement a lot more usable would be to flip those houses 90 degrees and put them on the driveway so that they enter to the driveway, and then the area that would be the easement would be the area immediately adjacent to the open space to the north, and it would also extend that open space to make it wider. In terms of the habitat for the mouse, that also, if you looked at it that way, that mouse requires, you know, it's seasonal, and it requires some of those grasslands that are higher up to get out of the floodplain when it hibernates. And it's, that area's been hayed now, a lot of that area. If you let it go natural, it's not clear what would happen with those mice. They may very well extend their habitat down there. In terms of benefit, the planning board always, in the planning department, always seemed to go toward the only benefit is affordability. And yet, they do things that are exactly counter to affordability. So if you have anything less than 50% affordable, you're actually increasing the affordability in Boulder because what you're doing is raising the median price of homes for the affordability. So if you're really serious about affordability, what you need to do is make sure that the affordable houses are 50%, which just keeps it even, which is what this one is proposing, or that it's more than 50% so that it actually does something about the percentage of houses that are affordable, not just looking at units without looking at non-affordable units or market rate units. And then finally, on benefit, the Gaptor Road houses in 2010 were in the 100-year floodplain, and they were allowed to be annexed with no benefit other than that it was basically going to, during floods and whatever, essentially protect the well water and protect the creek and whatever from sewage, septic tanks. And I don't see why the same benefit isn't even being considered here. That's actually a precedent in Boulder for a benefit. And that was a number of houses, and they didn't actually have to add any. That was the sole benefit. So, you know, those are some things I think the planning board needs to consider, both the Gaptor Road thing and what I was talking about with the 50% affordability.
Thank you, Stephen. And Joni, we're coming next to you. You should be able to unmute. Magdalena, you will be after Joni. First and last name, and then we'll start your timer when you begin your remarks.
Okay. It's Joni Cardone, J-O-A-N-I-E, and Cardone, C-A-R-D-O-N-E. So my main comment is just an observation is that this land is really all of the Hogen-Pancast. And just because a road goes through it doesn't mean that the east side of the property has any difference from the west side, which is what the city just bought because of all of our 30 years of fighting development on the Hogen-Pancast because of the groundwater and the flooding issues. So I think the planning board needs to consider this idea that putting housing in this area is still not a good idea. It's all Hogen-Pancast. That's what the Kents bought from Hogen and Pancast back in the 1960s. It was their land. So please keep that in mind, that this is really no difference in the land. The other thing that I wanted to mention about the mice, I have had two cats for a long time. They bring in plenty of mice. So they might be field mice, but they could be problemous, too. I live in Greenbelt Meadows. I'm adjacent to this, and I do worry about the flooding that could happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Joni. And Magdalena, I'm coming to you. Magdalena, you should be able to unmute yourself. Again, please say and spell your first name and last name.
Magdal, can you hear me?
We can.
Magdalena Rizca, first name M-A-G-D-A-L-E-N-A, last name Rizca, R-Z-Y-S-K-A. I live in Greenbelt Meadows, and my property, my backyard, looks into that hayfield, which is proposed as the easement and the building site for those four homes. And anytime we have a rain that's larger than maybe what we had today, that field floods. I look at it every single time, and it becomes a lake. During the 2013 floods, it was totally underwater all the way to the road, to 55th. And I'm grateful for that property every time it rains because instead of that water coming into my house, it's being naturally retained in that field. And the idea of building anything there totally freaks me out, as did building on the Hogen-Pancast property, which, by the way, part of that Hogen-Pancast is across 55th, and it touches the Kent property. And I don't understand how staff could agree that Hogen-Pancast was unbuildable because of the high groundwater and the danger of flooding the area, but this property is not. I really fail to understand the logic of that. So I would please take that into consideration because, you know, you can agree to build homes there, but when our homes get flooded, and FEMA will not cover it because it's going to come from the high groundwater underneath, who's going to pay for our home repairs or rebuilds? Hopefully, nobody will lose their lives. So please reconsider all of this because I think that land is totally unbuildable. Thank you.
Thank you, Magdalena. I'd like to apologize in general for names that I pronounced incorrectly. Here comes one now, Making Cowles, potentially. So, Mr. Cowles, I'm unmuting you next. After Mr. Cowles will be Fire Swan Catherine Sundvall. You should be able to unmute yourself now, Mr. Cowles.
All right. You don't want our video to appear.
Unfortunately, because of security rules, we're unable to open video for general public.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'm going to take a little different approach with this in terms of my comments and what I'm asking with respect to this project. I was on the planning board for five years, about 15 years ago, and chair for a couple of those years. And I know the pressure that's upon you when you get a concept review that seems to be okay with the adjacent neighbors, which oftentimes, oftentimes, their consent is one of the biggest obstacles that you have to deal with. But housing is a crisis in our community for young people, for people in their 20s, 30s, and even their 40s. What I see that's happening in our town is that the overwhelming number of new buyers of existing housing stock here are people in my age group, in their 60s and 70s. We're not building any place for younger people to live. Area 2 land that can be annexed in the city is very precious. And we require that area 2 land that's going to be annexed provide increased community benefit because otherwise, of course, the owners of the property here would have the option of just asking to be annexed or property with no increased development potential. But if this property is going to be developed at all, density needs to be pushed so that we provide places for people to live. There's almost no housing that is being built along the Front Range and none in Boulder for people in the area of 80% to 120% AMI. It's just not being done. So to take this lovely piece of land, and I understand that there are constraints to it, let's recognize there are constraints to every single piece of developable property in Boulder. To permit it to be developed and annexed with only four units on it would be a huge loss of opportunity. We put our planning board and our city council in a difficult position of having to having to assert community values and community needs that may override the desires of the immediately adjacent neighbors. But in this case, it is really important that you stand strong and that you insist that if this property is going to be annexed into the city of Boulder, that it needs to come in with a density between 20 and 40 units, just as the staff shows that this low-density, this LR land use designation would permit under our zoning. We don't want our community become all like the gated house across the street on 55th Street from this property. I thank you very much for listening to me, and thank you, everybody, for your service. I know it's a tough job and it takes a lot of time. Thanks very much.
Mr. Cowles, I am going to ask you to say and spell your first and last name for the audio recording.
Certainly. It's M-A-C-O-N-C-O-W-L-E-S. And I live downtown at about 17th and Mapleton.
Good hearing from you, Makin.
I'm sorry, Chairman?
I just said it's good hearing from you, Makin. He was too modest to say that he was not only on planning board, he was elected to city council as well.
Thank you. And now I'm coming to Fire Swan Catherine Sundvall. Again, I apologize for name mispronunciations. You should be able to unmute your mute button at this time. And if you would start by saying and spelling your first and your name for us, please, and then I'll start the timer.
My name is Catherine Sundvall, and it is C-A-T-H-E-R-I-N-E-S-U-N-D-V-A-L-L. My concern is the same as the other participants who have talked about the Hogen-Pancast and all of the years and years and years and years and years of study and discussion and comment and proposals and reviews of realizing that that property is unsuitable for development because of the water, the groundwater, and the risk to low-income people being damaged in floods and various other issues that we've had in the community for, now it seems, eons of time. I've been personally working with this for 35 years, this particular issue. And during that time, I was able to talk to organizations like Monarch Watch, various other wetlands preservation organizations. I've also been talking to them relative to CU's proposed developments and annexations. And there are other options for the Kents to raise the money they need to do their remodel and potentially all the costs of their annexes by creating preserves for these mice and perhaps like monarch butterflies, planting milkweed, doing things that enhance the environmental quality of these properties because, or, you know, the place where they want to develop houses because housing is not the only reason to develop something or annex something. You can also have great value in the precious, precious, precious in-ground water. that is in the area that is very rare in Colorado that leads to wetlands and other kinds of habitats that are extremely rare on the front range and extremely valuable. And there are organizations like Monarch Watch that look at properties like this and see the value, see the, um, benefit to the community to preserve them so that we can help both the endangered monarch butterflies and the endangered preble mice. As far as preble mice go, I have confirmed pre- preble mice on my property. I'm in Greenbelt Meadows and I have cats and they never catch a preble mouse. So, um, there are a lot of other neighbors that have seen preble mice. So the preble mice are in the area. They are, um, in the surrounding neighborhoods. So therefore, we would have to look very carefully about, um, potentially harming their potential to come back. So I encourage the Kents to look at other options for raising money for the remodel.
Is that all the, the public comment that we have, Brenda?
That was the final hand for public comment.
Okay. Well, I want to thank all the members of the public for contributing and, uh, and giving us your views on this, uh, concept plan review. And for actually being incredibly timely, we had everybody finish pretty much right on the dot, um, which may be a record. And, uh, I think given that it's seven thirty, um, unless any planning board member really needs a break, let's just go right into, uh, discussion. That all right? Hey, normally if it's eight, we'll, we'll go into a break. But, um, since it's only seven thirty, I think we can just go right into the session. So I think we have, um, in the staff report, we have, uh, the, the, um, factors that the planning board can consider in concept plan review of which there are eight, which anybody is welcome to jump in on discussion of. Uh, but I would also suggest that, um, we truncate the discussion with just going to the three key issues for analysis. Um, and the first one is preliminary consistency of the concept plan with the Boulder Valley Comp Plan policies. So if that's all right with planning board, uh, the key issue one is, is this proposed concept plan consistent with the BBCP land use plan and policies? Um, and I'll just open it up for, uh, for comment at this point, sticking to that question. Does anybody want to kick it off? Sarah?
Happy to kick it off. Um, so it seems like there are sort of two conflicting, um, Boulder Valley Comp Plan, uh, values, uh, for this project. Uh, one being the need for affordable housing, uh, and the other being the need to protect our natural resources. Um, and I don't have a, a position on which one, uh, to prioritize, but I do think, um, that, uh, finding, uh, it sounds like the applicant has already, um, recognized that they're going to have to work around, if they are able to build, they'll have to work around wetlands, they'll have to work around the, um, preble mouse, they'll have to work around other related, uh, natural resource, uh, concerns. And, um, and in terms of affordable housing, um, I, I would like to see the applicant, um, increase their, i- i- if they're able to build, to increase the number of, uh, residential units that they're able to, uh, build on the, whatever is the portion of the property they are ultimately able to build on. Um, and in particular, I think my approach to this would be to suggest that they look at the RL two, the underlying RL two, uh, land, um, zoning as a way of developing more, uh, permanently afford, or more afford, more housing and therefore more permanently affordable housing, whether it be single-family homes on smaller lots or duplexes, which, both of which could fit within the context of the, the, um, green, uh, Green Meadow neighborhood. Uh, I'm sorry, Green Belt Meadows neighborhood. Um, and those are basically my comments.
Okay. David?
Um, I just want to, um, speak after Sarah because I really appreciate very much what you said. I, I think that, um, I too, um, uh, see this as an opportu- uh, one of the rare opportunities to, uh, have something affordable that is also going to fit a little bit more of the middle, uh, range um, because of the, maybe the size of the houses might be a little bigger than what we usually get with affordable. And we might be able to get duplexes or, or, um, or even small single-family homes. But I, um, without going to a, a number that maybe would set off the kinds of, um, conflicts that we saw, uh, in the past, uh, you know, I saw, uh, staff's recommendation of looking at eight to twelve, um, maybe a little higher, uh, those, uh, that might be a way, you know, that might be the kind of number to get into. Um, I did want to talk about the, um, uh, the, uh, well, certainly, um, I totally agree. We, we will need to see to make sure that the, um, impact on the natural habitat has been addressed and, uh, endangered species, uh, and, um, need to be, um, looked after. So I'm sure that that work will get done before a site review, any site review that we would see. Um, the, the, um, community benefits of a, um, uh, of a particular, of a, of, of like an open space easement, uh, in there. I believe that fits into this, yeah, that, uh, yeah, that fits into this, uh, key issue one. I just want to make sure I stuck with key issue one. Uh, so the, um, I really, I, I appreciate what the applicant is doing. When I moved to Boulder in nineteen ninety-four, I'll just say I, I joined the East Boulder Rec Center and I would walk past and I would hear these peacocks yelling. And I could swear it was coming from the other side of the road, actually. So I must have a funny memory or maybe the echo or something. Uh, but, um, but I just, um, I've always felt a fondness for the, for your property, uh, uh, over the years. And, um, I do, um, I think it, um, it's lovely to think about, uh, park space on the property. But, um, I do also understand that, you know, when, when it comes to open sk- open space strategy, uh, the reason it's of interest to the community at large is how well it's connected with the rest of open space. Um, and as amongst all the other things. Uh, and this particular area enjoys access to some of the most amazing open space, contiguous open space in Boulder. Um, the, the whole, uh, South Boulder Creek, uh, and across the way, um, all the way up to Broadway, um, on paths. Uh, and so, uh, there's already quite a bit of contiguous open space. So I can, I can totally understand why it, it wouldn't be considered city priority to have a little pocket of open space embedded in the property. Uh, so, uh, you know, um, unfortunately, there's, not everything can be, uh, defined as a community benefit in that way. But I would hope, um, that, you know, with, uh, one of the things with RL two, if that is the model that's taken, is that it is open space based. So having open space for your dwelling units is really important. So it does provide that opportunity. Let's see. I think those are my main comments for this section.
Okay. Thanks, David. Comments? Not everybody else to speak. If you want to speak, you may speak. John?
Yeah, I, I think, uh, Dave's and Sarah's comments are, are excellent. And, uh, I, I think they're quite applicable. But I think that there is an option or there are considerations here which they haven't addressed, but are of concern to me. And that is that this is really, uh, as has been pointed out by others, uh, an extension of the Ho- Hogan Pancost property. In fact, originally was part of that property until it was sold, uh, separately. And it has the same, uh, topographical concerns and constraints that caused so much consternation with the Hogan Pancost property. And so for that reason, I have to say that I'm a little bit surprised by the, lack of concern by the neighbors that we've heard tonight and seen in the, in the written comments so far, on that front. And, but I, but I would suggest that there is another option that the applicants might consider. And that is, uh, making some sort of a, an agreement with the city, whether it be sale of the bulk of the property or some sort of a conservation easement of the bulk of the property, uh, except for the, for their house that they would like to, uh, remodel, uh, for, for conservation purposes. Um, that wouldn't provide, uh, affordable housing necessarily unless they were to do it off-site. But, uh, it would accomplish what, what was accomplished with the Hogan Pancost property in an area that logically should be treated in a similar manner.
Thanks, John. Lisa?
Uh, yeah, so just to follow on, um, my colleagues on the board, uh, I share, um, some of the concerns you just talked about, John, in terms of just making sure that we're clear on flooding and, um, preble's jumping mouse and so on. And at the same time, I also agree with other colleagues who've gone before, um, that if it's going to be developed, I'd be very interested in seeing is there a way to, perhaps, and it's a relatively small parcel, we may not be able to rotate it, um, or change it, but some ways to kind of get some better contiguous open space. Um, is there some way to make that happen? And then I'm not a super big fan of the largest state-style homes. If it is built on, I would like to see parrot homes, duplexes, something like that, or, or a mix. You know, maybe one is a triplex and two others are duplexes or something, um, to kind of increase the housing that we have. And, and I think, I think either of those could potentially meet the BBCP, uh, guidelines on annexation.
Thanks, Lisa. Any other comments by the board? Lupita?
Just right off the bat, I agree with all the comments. They were very much what, what was in my mind regarding, we need to increase the density. Um, I do recognize that the issue of flooding may be possible, um, and it may happen. We have some kind of like contradictory witnessing here with what they have seen there. But, uh, with regarding the mice and also in the flooding situation. But what I was thinking is that if we look at the topographical, um, variability in that area, even if there are some zones that are next to it, um, they don't mean that all going to behave the same way. So I think that that's the technical piece that needs to be kept in mind. But with regards to the community benefit, I think that is something that, um, clearly is, um, very important to this board. Maybe it wasn't so much to previous boards. And, you know, that's one of the nice things about things that progress. I think it's clear that our city has, um, very big needs and not always an opportunity to do something about it. Uh, this is one opportunity and we just need to be judicious about how we can do a win-win with, with the owners. Does that make sense?
Sure. Thank you. Hey, does anybody else have anything to say about Peter?
Thanks. I think that we put the staff and the community and ourselves in interesting position when we go so far and pat ourselves on the back after we have meetings, uh, where we say we want to achieve a certain percent of affordable housing by a certain date. And, um, and then we don't fall through. So I look at the site and I see a, a pretty nice, beautiful, open site with the conservation easement. And I tend to agree with staff that if we can, and David, we can add a few more homes. I don't think this is the place to go bonkers and repeat the past. I think there are sensitivities on the site and I think that that's how we do it. We, we work with discretion. I like Lupita's word, uh, judicious, judiciously. And we do what we can and we create something here, uh, that meets all the goals. And I'm sure that the environmental sensitivities will be documented and dealt with. And I think that it is a balancing act. Sarah said that this is the balancing act. You know, this is a city that we all have decided as a society we will live in. We live here and nature is welcome. I love nature. Um, we don't live in Rocky Mountain National Park, but we're welcome to visit. And so this is the city where we have chosen to put people. So let's put them here as carefully as possible and adding more open space, uh, in a place where we have the chance to add a few homes. I think it's, uh, it complies with BBCP.
Okay. Um, anybody else want to speak again before I just come in and give my opinion? All right. So so I, I think what I've heard from planning board, and which I would like to echo, um, is that the, uh, the proposal for four new houses and the preservation of the original home site is either, um, too much or too little. So, you know, the precedent of Gafter Road is essentially that, in my mind, um, and, and I've been on planning board while we approved some of the straggling last, uh, last houses along Gafter that were, were annexed, um, is that warehouses that have their septic systems challenged or, or, or in danger of flooding again, um, want to come in and annex in this area. Um, we can annex them for the community benefit of better groundwater protections and connection to public water and sewer, um, where there is no additional density proposed. So to the extent that, you know, we're not actually talking about a project, we're just talking about providing services and there's not going to be big additional, um, costs to the city and hooking up, um, a, a set of new houses, um, that's fine. And, um, and that's what we did with Gafter Road. And so if the Kents wanted to annex into the city to get public services and not, uh, not add any additional units of density, I think they could make the convincing argument that Gafter Road, um, while we don't have precedent in, in annexation, because each one is its own legislative decision on the part of city council at that time, uh, then it makes the same kind of sense. And, and we would have, we'd have benefits, um, in continuing to have open space. You know, maybe part of the, you know, the conditions of the annexation would be that, um, the, uh, the open space on the site be preserved, the LA of trees be preserved, there be a conservation event, whatever. On the other hand, if you're going to open the door to development, if you want to come in with additional units of density and you want to finance a project for yourself through development, you want to become a developer. Now, let's talk about whether the type of development that you're proposing is really the type of development the city wants to see. And I think the planning board's answer, and I support that, is no, it's not the kind of development that we want to see. We don't want to see four estate homes, even if two of them are available to affordable or, or available as affordable units. And so my suggestion would be, um, that to the extent that you wanted to propose additional development, be bolder and propose more, um, a, uh, a mix of housing types, smaller and larger and attached housing types in the RL two makes sense. I think your, your plan, um, which concentrates all of the proposed development on the far west side of the property, um, by the road, by fifty-fifth is, is exactly right. And I think that in the same footprints that you've got for the four houses with the same amount of impermeable surface, it's quite likely that you could put a bunch of, um, of units and get not only more housing, but meet that missing middle and get more affordable housing in the eighty to one twenty percent AMI range that we're looking at. So I think that would support jobs, housing balance, give clear community benefit for annexation, um, promote a compact development pattern, um, preserve, uh, the residential neighborhoods, would be more environmentally sensitive design in leaving the open space. And, and also having more density along, uh, South Boulder Road, basically almost walking distance to an inner-city bus um, that gets you to Denver in twenty-five, thirty, forty minutes. You know, this is not the worst place in the world for density. And, you know, remember Hogan Pancost was about twenty acres with over a hundred units proposed for it. You know, the idea here is even, even if half of the site was developed, um, we'd only be talking about twenty units on five and a half acres. You know, we heard, uh, ideas like eight to twelve, uh, but something in that, in that range seems to be more of a sensible, um, uh, proposal. So for comp plan compliance, um, anybody have anything that that stirred? Anybody have anything that that stirred or should we move on? Okay, so the second.
Just I had my hand up there.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to, to say I, I appreciated your introduction and the comparison to the Gaptor Road situation, which I think is quite appropriate. And it's one of the, it's the option that I was alluding to also in my comments.
Thanks, John. Okay. Next key issue is number two. Does the proposed residential land use meet the intent of community benefits for annexation and are there alternatives? I, I, you know, I don't know if we really handled that already, but if anybody has anything to add. The floor is yours. Raise your hand. Sarah?
So I do feel like what we discussed with staff question number one is basically also the answers to staff question number two. But I just wanted to highlight something one of the members of the public said regarding how the, what is proposed for open space could actually be transformed into something quite vital. And that as this, as this project moves forward, if it is able to move forward, wherever the houses go and wherever the wetlands are, I think it would be wonderful for the developer to consider, consider how it might, he, they might revitalize whatever open space, whatever space ends up not being developed. And it could be something quite amazing. So that's all the only thing I wanted to add.
So I'll, I'll jump in, Sarah. Thanks for that intro. I, I think that one of the, the keys that makes RL two a great zoning choice for this is that the application would likely come in under a site review. And the site review would require 6,000 square feet of open space per unit. And given the fact that there are 239,580 square feet of open space available on this site. Well, there's a little less because some of the sites already covered with the house and the outbuildings. But given all that open space, having a really compact development with shared open space through site review is the way to go here. This is, you know, if you want to do development, that's the purpose of plan development. That is the, the entire concept behind plan development is a planning concept. Plan development is embodied in our code under the, the section called site review. It's the same thing. It used to be called PDs and PUDs in Boulder, but now we call it on-site review. So you know, doing something like that, again, I think if, if the goal is to really be a developer. And I, I cringe to say this with the applicant, you know, sitting right here in front of me on Zoom and having lived there for a long time. But if, you know, if you really want to do the development, you know, the idea of scraping the house, doing all the development up on the road, taking a page out of Sarah's book and doing so much thoughtful. So much thoughtful site improvement that you can actually demonstrate that there's more sponge capability of the site after the project than before. And hopefully you get the neighbors to realize that you're actually making, you know, you're, you're creating a, a project that will will capture more groundwater and protect their houses than if there was a no project alternative. You know, that's the kind of thing developers do. And if, if you don't want to do that, you know, then maybe just, you know, apply for annexation for the single house and, and get yourself a, a public sewer connection. So you know, I, that's, that's me talking and if that's, I, I hope that doesn't offend you, Joe. But, but I'm offering that as a, as an option. Anybody else on planning board? David?
Um, yeah, I, I totally, I was going to mention some of the things you just mentioned. The land use for this is low density residential. And that is the priority that, that has been put in place for this area. So it does argue for, you know, I, I said eight to 12, I actually had written eight to 16. But um then the, so the, this is a, a section where we can talk about densities, or I mean the land use density and the community benefits. So I, I did want to kind of say that, that I do agree with it being compatible with land use. And I heard, I've heard a lot of people say, question whether this is a buildable area. What became a Hogan Pancost somehow says that it is not buildable. And that actually isn't really what happened. That like, like was said, it was over 100 residential units. And there was a lot of concern about whether that was the right amount. So it was a different beast altogether. It is going to be very important when we look for a site review to be assured that the right studies on the water table have been done and that we can be very well convinced that it's not going to impact the adjacent neighbors from a hydrology standpoint to every, every possible way we can look at it. Because those, those, if it, if it comes to planning board with a lot of kind of fuzzy messages, again, it makes planning board nervous. So please get the hydrology studies in line for site review and make sure that we see things that make us very confident that we're not going to negatively impact the neighbors or the surrounding open space.
Lupita?
Yes, comments for the, for the owners. I really appreciate that they came to us and they given us some opportunity to look at the larger picture that they have. You get in a sense of what, where we are. And so now I, I like to kind of invite you to join the efforts from this particular board on moving forward with more conscientious city growth and keeping in mind some of the highest needs that we have, which we have tried very, very hard to, to stick to it. The, the idea of affordable housing and we had one of the, one of the community members who spoke very eloquently about how difficult that is and how few opportunities we get to address that. And so by now you're probably getting a sense that this is a very difficult job because you want to do everything right and you want to everybody to be happy. I'm inviting you guys, you know, the, the couple here, just as much as you love this land. Imagine how many young people could love this land and they just need to have a chance. So having spaces where people can afford to live, not everybody needs a huge house. In fact, nobody does. But giving people an opportunity to have a smaller piece of land with a home where they can enjoy the beauty that we all have right now. I think it's the best legacy you can provide the city. I can guarantee you, you'll be remembered fondly by those people who benefit from that decision. And so I, I invite you to work with the city, finding that, that special judicial middle ground where we can all do well. And I just think about future generations. This is important for young people to have an access to, you know, to, to good housing and beautiful views. And so that's, I just want to close with that because I really think that you have a beautiful piece of land and there's a lot that can be done. And you can also make a great gift to the city. I'm not saying, you know, give it away, but just think in terms of concessions you can make. Thank you.
Okay, any last comments on number two? Okay, Peter, you gonna say something?
Is the applicant's dog still nearby? I just wanted to see that before the dog went to bed. We don't know. People don't bring their dogs. Use the planning board. Wow, that's great. Peacocks and puppies.
Okay, you have anything on a, whether the land use meets the intent of community benefits or just wanted a dog shot?
Just needed a little dog moment. It's almost eight o'clock.
Okay. All right. Does anybody else have anything to say about number two? Okay, great. Let's, and it is an awesome dog. Let's move on to key issue number three, which is around the access to this site. I'll, I'll take any planning board members' comments. David Ensign?
All right. Well, I was just very relieved Elaine to hear you say that there may be some, some. I never like to go against the DCS because the DCS is very technical and it's got all the experts behind it. But if there is a way to work with that, the existing corridor is beautiful. There is like the canopy of trees and also it is closer to the speed mitigation on that road. If you, if it stays where it is, where people have to slow down to below 20 miles per hour because of a speed bump further away from the curve. So, and it isn't, doesn't have the amount of traffic where, you know, there's any concerns about it being across from the other driveway to, you know, for any sort of coordination, traffic reasons. So, so I'm glad that there's some room for asking for a variance there. And I think that's, that I would support that. That's all.
Any other comments about that? John?
Yes, I, I also would be open to considering a variance there.
Anybody else?
I'd like to see a variance.
Okay. I see a lot of head nods. Okay. Any other final comments before I sum it up? Okay. So I'm just going to sum it up for the applicant's benefit and, and all of their consultants who are here tonight. Thank you very much for bringing this matter in front of us for a concept review. And I hope that it was useful to you to hear our feedback. That really is the sole purpose of concept review in front of the planning board. So our recommendations, I'm not going to catch, capture everything, but I'm just going to give you a brief, brief summing up. Our, seemed like we, we had pretty resounding support for looking at RL two as the appropriate zoning district for initial zoning as a way to get more housing and more affordable housing and more variety and a mix of housing typologies on the site. Looking at something more than is what's being proposed at this point with four new units, looking towards eight or 12 or 16 units. Also, if, if not, if, if the point is, is if going to that level of density is too much. Potentially making an agreement to sell or sell a conservation easement on the unburdened property that isn't under the house to allow for the defraying of the cost of remodeling the house. And just annex the, the single unit, you know, in a way that's kind of conforming to the ideas behind the Gaptor Road. Annexations. Site review would be an appropriate way to come forward with community benefit of restoration of the land and sensitive infill along 55th Street and affordable density. Again, with multiplicity of housing styles and, and, or at least housing typologies. And the planning board was very much in favor of a variance to the DCS to preserve the existing access and, and and allow especially for that LA of trees, I suppose. So thank you very much for coming. This is usually the time when, if the applicant would like, we give the applicant a chance to say something, either, you know, rebuttal or, or just a response of some kind. So, you know, take a few minutes if you'd like.
You'll need to raise your hands to let me know you would like to speak and then we can unmute you.
I think Joe Kent's raising his hand.
And I am inviting each of you to unmute Liz and Joe.
Liz, go ahead. You can start and I will follow.
Oh, sure, Joe. Make me start. So I think one issue, Harmon, we want to just clarify for the board. And, and actually first, just to thank you because this is really helpful for us to move forward. And I feel like you addressed all the issues that we need feedback on. So thank you first. The, when you talked about the choice to be a developer and to add units. I think that's the area the Kents want to clarify because I think we came to this process as I laid out in the presentation very open and wanting to hear direction. And I think we felt entering concept plan that we did not have really much of a choice but to propose units. And with that, I'll, I'll let Joe explain as the property owner.
Yeah, and that, that's right. When we sat down with housing the first time, it was that they would, they wanted us to propose units. They, if we would have come in as a single unit, they didn't think we could get in. So we haven't even really thought through that point at this point in time. So that may be an option that we may look at, but I'm not sure, listening to you guys, and thank you for taking the time tonight to do it. That, that that would still be an option. I know a couple of you have said that, but I'm not sure that the entire planning board would, would go for that because I've heard, you know, anywhere from zero to 16. So we're going to have to do our homework to figure out how to get the happy medium, which is what, you know, to a person, each one of you have said, we need to try to figure out how to make this site work. And that's our goal because we want to move in, we want to live there. So that, that's been our goal from, from day one. And again, the other thing we're going to need to look at that Liz pointed out earlier.
Hey, Joe?
The, the wetland. Where, where we're at with that. So there, there may be some constraints that, that we haven't really thought about or even talked about yet. So. But again, let me, Liz, if you want to add to that, go ahead, but I just want to take the time to say thank you guys for for sitting down with us tonight. And do you guys have any other questions of us?
Yeah, real quick, Joe, did, did everybody lose Joe for 20 seconds there? Or was that just my internet connection?
Just you.
I could hear, yeah, I could hear everything.
Okay, sorry. I, Joe, I missed a chunk of what you said, but it's on the recording. So thanks for that.
Sure. But do you guys have any other questions for either Liz or myself? And I want to thank Liz and our team because these guys are, have been really, you know, helping us and, you know, trying to put something together that we hope that we'll, we can get through, get into the city. Like I said, our goal is to be able to move into the property sometime in the near future, at least this decade. So.
Okay, great. Liz, do you have anything more to add or any other questions for the board?
Nope, just thank you and we'll continue to communicate with Elaine and housing and open space. And we have, we have lots of homework to do before a site review. And hopefully when you see us next, we'll have done that homework.
Yep, 12 week old Brittany.
Yeah. All right. Well, thank you guys very much. I'm going to close this, this public hearing and, and take a, a short break before we go to our next concept plan. So it is 8:07 by my clock. Let's come back at 8:50. Yeah?
Harmon, may I interrupt you for a moment?
Please.
Before we take a break, it appears I need to get your opinion on something. Lynn Segal has returned and she has asked if she could speak again to get her missing time back.
Yeah, let's give her that whatever minute that she had left when she started cutting out and, and we'll, we'll let her finish her public comment. And, and then we'll, we'll take our break.
Thank you. Brenda, I'm going to turn that over to you because as far as the timer and stuff like that.
I caught the timer at one.
Concept plan for a new 100% onsite permanently affordable housing development consisting of 100 attached dwelling units, mix of unit sizes will range from studio to two bedroom with onsite leasing and small community space reviewed under case number LUR 2020 00011. And I'm going to turn it back over to Charles to introduce the planner who's going to take us through the application.
Great. Thanks very much. Andrew Collins will be presenting staff's analysis this evening.
Great. Thanks, Charles. Evening, board. I'm Andrew Collins. Again, next item on the agenda is a concept plan review for 27, 27, 29th Street. Just a brief overview of tonight's presentation will review the purpose of the concept plan review. Look at the existing context, then go into the proposed concept briefly and then a discussion on the key issues. As a reminder, the purpose of the concept plan review was intended to give the applicant comments from the public, staff and planning board early in the process. There is no formal application, excuse me, no formal action taken. It's meant to be a conversation. And it's used to determine a general development plan, including buildings and uses, general circulation pattern, transportation, architectural characteristics, as well as environmental opportunities and constraints. A public notice was sent to the property owners within 600 feet for this project, as well as published in the newspaper. The requirement for the sign posting found in the Boulder Revised Code was weighed pursuant to the disaster emergency. The requirement for the sign posting found in the Boulder Revised Code was waived pursuant to the disaster emergency. Authority granted to the city manager due to the pandemic. I will say we have received a few emails early on, some signing concerns regarding parking, others their support for the affordable housing that was proposed. Just going into the site context now, the site is 1.6 acre site located at the northwest corner of Bluff Street and 29th Street, shown here in green. Belmont Street is to the north, 28th Street is to the west. Goose Creek Trail System is located to the south as well. Also, there is some existing multifamily developments that has occurred along 29th Street, Thistle Project, I believe. And then another market rate for market rate project across the street on Bluff. In terms of the Boulder Cop Plan land use, it is designated as general business. And these areas are for the most part located at junctions and major arterials of the city where intensive commercial uses do exist. Uses that are encouraged here are a mix of business uses as well as housing compatible with the surrounding business character. And serving as a transition to other residential uses. Zoning is BMS Business Main Street. The land use code states that these are areas anchored around the main street that are intended to serve the surrounding residential neighborhoods. And that development should occur in a pedestrian oriented pattern with buildings built up close to the street. With retail uses on the first floor and residential and office uses above that where other complementary uses can also be allowed. The project also falls within the opportunity zone. Which council last year passed some ordinances for this area seeking to encourage more residential uses. And seeking to discourage other non residential uses such as offices. This project also is going to require a use review for the attached housing that's located on the ground floor in the Business Main Street zoning district. So looking at the context now, the site is the existing Rally's Fitness Center, again, at the corner of Bluff and 29th Street. We have some shots here of the adjacent properties. So the top right image is the property to the north. You can see some of the parking areas there. In the image to on the bottom right hand side of the screen is the adjacent property to the west. You can see there is the fencing for the play courts and the pool on the right hand side there. Where the curb cut is, one of our future transportation plans does call for a future alley to occur along the western property line there in that image. Some more shots of the existing context. So this is an infill site. You can see on the left hand side of your screen, that's I believe the new Thistle Affordable Project that's gone up there along 29th. And then some of the existing commercial strip development. That has occurred along Bluff Street to the south. The bottom right hand image is a view looking southward from the corner of 29th and Bluff. You can see that sidewalk there that connects into the Goose Creek pathway. Just at a high level, I'll go over the proposed concept plan. I'll leave the details to the applicant team. This is a Boulder Housing Partners project. This is 100% affordable permanent units with 100 units of a mix of studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms. There's also about 1,000 square feet of community room and leasing office on the ground floor. There are three buildings proposed, each had three stories tall with approximately 100 parking spaces. Again, because there is proposed residential uses on the ground floor in this zoning district, it will require a use review. Here's some images of the proposed open spaces. There's a large courtyard central feature proposed. 15% of the site is required to be open space for the land use code. There's also a pedestrian connection going from the courtyard to the corner of Bluff and 29th that would then tie into that connection to the Goose Creek Trail System. And the architectural renderings and the materials palette board. So this takes us to the key issues for the project. The first key issue is whether the proposed concept plan. Is consistent with the Boulder Valley Cop Plan policies. And secondly, is a proposed site plan consistent with the planned transportation connections and parking requirements? So regarding the first key issue, staff has found the project in keeping with many of the goals and policies of the BBCP. Especially those related to the jobs, housing balance and affordable housing provisions, which is a major tenet of the BBCP. In addition, the project is a compact infill development pattern. And is also providing a new alley connection along the western property line, consistent with policy 6.18. Policy 2.16 mixed use and higher density development does seek to encourage a mix of uses. If the project were to incorporate some additional small retail, commercial space on the ground floor. This could further enhance its alignment with this particular policy. That said, you know, staff is aware of Boulder Housing Partners program is residential in nature. The second key issue is consistency with the planned transportation connections and parking. So the site, as you can see on the screen here, follows within the North 28th Street Transportation Network Plan. Which does call for a future alley again along the western property line going from Bluff Street northward to Belmont. And talking with the applicant team, they have committed to provide the future alley along this western property line through a combination of a 10 foot. Right of way dedication and 10 foot public access easement. The project will likely require a parking reduction based upon the preliminary design plans. 120 parking spaces would be required. Currently, the plans that they are proposing are showing 100 parking spaces. And staff will review the parking reduction at the time of a site review as part of the next steps. So with that, are there any questions for staff?
Thanks for that clear presentation, Andrew. Do we have any questions from the board? See Sarah Silver's hands up first.
This is actually more of a sort of almost like a background question. How are and I don't want to make you go into something technical, but the trip generation studies, I'm just sort of curious how. In a building that's going to have 100 units, do they develop, do they? Predict or project only a third of people who live there would be using their cars on any given at any given rush hour. I just, how does that? How does that get determined?
Well, Sarah, we would defer that to the applicant's team.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, just save that kind of question for for when we have the applicant. Does anybody have any questions about anything they read in the staff report or conclusions that staff drew? No? Okay. Then let's let me turn it over to the applicant. For the applicant presentation. I'll turn it back to Andrew. I think you probably know who's going to make the presentation.
Yeah, I believe Laura Scheinbaum with applicant team will start us off and then go to Bill Holicky, but I will share. Their presentation now if I can pick it up.
And you should both be able to unmute yourselves at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you see the PDF on the screen?
I can, yes. You ready? All right. Good evening.
Apologize, Laura. I neglected last time to share how the timing of the presentations would work. Because you're using the screen and we want you to be able to do that, I will be timing, but you won't be able to see the timer. Instead, I'll hold up a five minutes at five and then I'll count down from three, three minutes.
So we have a total of 15. Is that right?
Total of 15. Yes, that is correct.
Okay, are we ready? Is that timer set to go? Yeah, okay. And so, good evening. I'm Laura Scheinbaum with Boulder Housing Partners. It's really nice to see you all again this week on Zoom. I typically would kick us off. You'll see a slide up in front of us with a lot about our mission and who we serve and. The need for affordable housing, the demand that we're seeing. We talked a little bit about that last week, so I don't want to. Go too much more into that and spend more time on the project. I also, I'm pretty sure you're all very aware of how important affordable housing is. I will say though, just to reiterate, housing that is affordable allows families to live where they work. Housing that's affordable provides opportunity for people to live in the city of Boulder that may not otherwise be able to live here. So not just those with privilege, but those who need that affordable rent. And the provision of affordable housing is is one more small step towards equity in Boulder. I know that you all know that. And I just actually really want to applaud you all for the leadership that you're providing around affordable housing and all of its different forms. And then to that end, I'm thrilled to introduce this project to you. Next slide, please. I'm sorry. And then one more. And if you want to come back to this, I'm having to answer questions about who we serve. But the site is 2727 29th Street, as Andrew's already gone through, probably better known as the Rally Health and Sports Center. It's a redevelopment infill site. We are proposing 100 units to be built there. With zero, one and two bedroom units. This is the demand that we're seeing right now in our existing portfolio as well as applicant. Applications for new product that we are leasing up at the moment. It's really representative of a workforce type housing applicant. And this is intended to be that type of workforce site. We intend to finance this with low income housing tax credits. And that means that the rents would be affordable at 60% of AMI and below. BHP always intends to push those rents as low as we possibly can and still finance the project. So. I think you would look to see sort of a rainbow of rents from that 30% of AMI up to 60%, but no more than 60%. We would look to mirror the rent levels that we're producing over at 30th and Pearl, which is, you know, really, really deep affordability. So that is the intention for the site there. As you can see, if we go back just one slide, please, the the location is tremendous in terms of the. Adjacency of all the different amenities to the property. You've got pharmacies and groceries and restaurants and shopping and public transportation along 28th and and Belmont that. Will all serve the site really well, also really good access to the Goose Creek Bike Path. So those are all really important amenities. And when we look for property for us to go in and do affordable housing, those are the types of things that we look for so that we can. Focus on housing. And you'll hear me speak in a minute about this mixed use question. We will seek your input on parking. That was already brought up by Andrew. And we will seek a parking reduction, how deep a reduction. We'll show you a couple of plans tonight that would. Perhaps be contemplated. We, as a housing authority, always provide eco passes to our residents as a standard. We're also starting. To provide car share access to our residents as a standard. There's always ample and secure bike storage. So, you know, certainly our preference would be a higher reduction if possible. We'd rather. Provide green space, open space that we can program as opposed to pavement. But certainly, we want to also be a good neighbor and balance those things out. So. So we'll look for your feedback on that this evening. And as I mentioned also, we're not contemplating this at the moment as mixed use. We'd like your feedback on that as well. As you can see from this map, the adjacency to so much retail and commercial space is. Feels like we would almost compete with things that are already existing in the neighborhood. And also, just the importance, our mission is to provide housing and. Diverting any amount of square footage from housing into a commercial endeavor really. Kind of pulls away from our mission, especially again, given the location and all that's around it as accessible to the site. In terms of where we are in process, we are currently do have site control with a purchase and sale agreement. This is the last step in our due diligence. And so we wanted to seek input from the city to make sure that we weren't going to come up. Against anything that we didn't didn't foresee. So we would hope to close on the property later this summer and then start in on all the different review and entitlement processes after that. So again, I'm really happy to be here. We welcome your questions and your feedback. I'm now going to hand off to Bill Holicky and his team at Coburn to walk you through the details of the. Plan that we've brought forward. Thank you.
You should be able to unmute, Bill.
Thanks, I appreciate that. I was I was muzzled. I hate that. Thank you, Laura. So Bill Holicky with Coburn Architecture, the as Laura mentioned, the site's really rich. In commercial services, restaurants, grocery stores, retail, that kind of stuff. If we could forward two slides from here. You'll see a context of what's happening. So everything in white is commercial, residential is in yellow. The existing residential neighborhoods are along the west and north side of the site. And then the Goose Creek Path is the dark green line that runs through with the open space associated with that in the lighter green. We've, you know, years ago, we changed the zone, what's allowed in these zones to encourage residential in our community core. And what's kind of neat about it is it's starting to happen. You can see these little pockets of yellow or light orange here. Popping up mostly along the spine of Goose Creek. What's kind of cool about that is it's created really kind of two. Types of circulation patterns, the commercial pattern, which is along the streets and by car. And then the Goose Creek pattern is really a highly residential pattern. A lot of people that live either on either end of Goose Creek or along Goose Creek. Use that as sort of Main Street. Underneath that key plan is 30th and Pearl. And then our site is adjacent to some other residential that has developed along this Goose Creek path. So it's a pretty neat opportunity. And to the mixed use question, with so much commercial there, what's really needed is the residential. So by dropping residential into the area, we're starting to make it a little bit more balanced, but it really needs a lot more residential even than than what we have. If we can move to the next slide. The site is really richly served with transit and alt modes. Green and dash green are either current or future paths and then RTD and obviously bike paths around the site. Pay attention to that little piece of green that sticks off of the southeast corner. As Andrew mentioned, that's pretty important. That's the connection to Goose Creek path. So if we get next slide. I'll show you how the form of the site was developed. So we took the overall building mass that's allowed. That's the gray box in the upper left. And we started to erode it. So first that box was chopped back for all the required setbacks. And then we said, well, we need the open space. Let's. Let's hollow out the middle because that helps keep the buildings to the sidewalk and the perimeter, helping to make that urban street. And reclaim the sidewalk from what now is a sea of parking generally in our core to a walkable pedestrian oriented street. But we still want permeability into the site. So the next picture on the far right. The dark blue shows the open space connection. So we're we're creating permeability from the street into the site. And then on the bottom left, we have to have parking somewhere. So we're hiding that both under buildings into the back. Corners of the site away from the street. That's the light purple. And then finally, the last slide, we start to articulate the building for architecture. And pedestrian scale. On the next slide. We can look at this in a little more detail. One interesting thing about this whole quarter year is that it's really large scale blocks. It's not like it is downtown. It's really based on the automobile, not on the foot. So we end up with big blocks with big buildings. Putting the alley in will help, but we still have these large footprint buildings. You can see that on the on the to the west and north of our site. These old commercial buildings that are the big footprints dominate. But to the east side. And a little bit to the south and southeast, the residential buildings that have gone in have a very different scale, much more human scale, much smaller and much more walkable. So this starts to continue that pattern, which is positive change, we think. On the next slide. You'll see that this is the site plan. So again, you can see the Goose Creek Path connection coming up on the southeast. So in the bottom right of the slide. We really want that to feel welcoming and feel connected to the building. So we've spent some time thinking about what the corner should be. We'll talk more about that. The site plan keeps the open space, a chunk of it programmed in the middle of the site. But again, we still have this permeability in spaces that may meet the street. This shows 100 parking spaces, as Andrew mentioned, and we want to talk about that a little bit. If we could go to the next slide. This shows a scenario with 75 parking spaces and 100 units. We'll talk a little bit more about what BHP thinks the need for parking is as we get to the parking slides. But I just want to show that difference because we're going to come back to it with a question. On the next slide, this does highlight that open space. BHP highly programs their open space since they manage heavily all of their properties. They really program with amenities, all the different spaces. So your thoughts on that would be helpful. I think that we're feeling that we all need a place to sit, some passive open space. Possibly a place to like toss a ball, throw a frisbee, hang out, walk a dog, but less so the exercise open space because of our adjacency to Goose Creek. Again, wondering. Your thoughts on that. And when we come back for site review, we'll have fully programmed open space based on the needs of the tenants and what we hear from staff and you guys tonight. The next slide talks about parking. So this is the 100 space scenario. It does. So we have 100 units and 100 spaces. The next slide shows the 75 space scenario. BHP has been been looking at targeting their their tenants, figuring out what they feel is necessary and what they feel. and what they feel there's a market for. They feel pretty confident that there is a market for affordable units for folks that don't have vehicles. So this proposes or will contemplate that 25 of the units would be for folks that don't need a car to park on the site. That's a little different, and it's pushing the envelope a bit compared to what other projects in the city have done. So I think the project works both ways. You know, in one scenario, you get a better open space, tighter parking. The other scenario, the parking is fairly comfortable and the open space goes down. So that's a question for planning board, really interested in how you feel about that, whether you think this is an appropriate place to push that envelope. So on the next slide, Laura and Andrew mentioned this just really briefly. The different unit types are mixed throughout the site, studios, ones and twos, 100 units currently shown. We might lose a few here and there because as we have to provide right of way, and we've identified with staff a couple of areas that the right of way needs to be increased. I think it's five feet along the eastern side on 29th Street and 10 feet for the alley along the western side. So it's in a right of way rather than a public access. But that has the impact of probably costing us a handful of units, so that that unit count might go down a bit. To go to the next slide, we can start to see the architecture. So again, as you all know, in site review, affordable housing, we could ask for 55 feet. We're trying to keep the scale of the building smaller than that. So this is designed to fit with the height limit. We're really focused and concerned and interested in the pedestrian experience. You've certainly mentioned that a few times. Our office is right around the corner from this. We walk to restaurants all the time, walk to get things. And the pedestrian experience is not wonderful. So we're trying really address that, bring the building to the street, create that horizontal datum point at 12, 14 feet above the ground with this continuous awning piece, and really make the building interesting for people to walk along. We're trying to hit that, say, 50 to 60 foot spacing on the building, so the buildings in those modules. Each one of the gray towers is a place for people to go in. There isn't a centralized entry. So if you live, for example, right behind the blue car on the bottom right, you would go in the door that's right next to that unit. That's your door. So in that way, we've created this rhythm that as people walk along, that every 50 feet or so, that's about 10 or 15 seconds of walking, 10 to 12 seconds. And that's kind of people's attention span. So that's why downtown is so interesting to walk along. The buildings change every so often. We're trying to do the same thing. And if we could go to the last slide, the, should have mentioned them in the slide before, but the materials we're using are focused on composite wood and texturized materials, again, to create a little bit of an interest, a little bit of texture and materiality as you walk past the building. And then lastly, we're really interested in trying to draw people in and create that that interaction with the street. So this is the corner that faces the bike path. Every entrance to the building, there's a change. There is an erosion to the to the tower. Or not, I shouldn't say tower, to that block, that entry block. And in this case, it's, you know, we don't know what it is yet. We don't know what the materiality is. We've been coloring this maroon color because that's where the people come into the building. On each side of this cut through would be the community space. So last point, because that's that's what we wanted to talk about. I want to make the point that this is very early. This looks like architecture, but it's really just ideas. The site is just ideas. I posed a couple of questions for parking. We're very interested in your feedback, and I think at this point, once we have this meeting and get your ideas along with staffs and the communities, we can really start in earnest on figuring out what this could be. So thanks for your time, and we look forward to your to your thoughts.
Okay. Thanks, Bill. Thanks, Laura. And I noticed there are other folks from housing here, including Kurt from the city and Jeremy from BHP. So I think we can, we've got ample opportunities to ask questions of the applicant if folks have them. I know Sarah had one in the last section, so she'll get a chance to ask. Lupita, your hands up first.
Thank you for the presentation. And my question has to do with the people that you surveyed to determine that this would be a good site for reduced parking. And in particular, I'm concerned in the previous, some previous projects, we we noticed that for some populations, parking is very, very important. It's often not necessarily accounted for. So specifically, I'm talking about people who work out of their cars, you know, like our gardeners, our construction people, cleaners. So were those type of people part of your survey? And if they were or were not, how did you accommodate for their responses in the in the way that you're looking at parking right now in this particular site? Does that make sense?
It does, and I see that Laura's muted. So while she unmutes herself, let me just say that I think it wasn't people polled for this site directly as Boulder Housing Partners has looked at their overall group. I think they house in housing 1,400 or 1,600 people. That's quite a few. So they're looking at their overall market and seeing that some folks, some portion of those folks don't have vehicles. So while certainly a lot of people do, we wouldn't ever suggest that we were going to remove all cars. They feel that a small segment, in this case, 25 units, would be a reasonable, you know, response to the folks they see coming to utilize their their units.
Yeah, just just to follow up on that, Bill, thank you. That's exactly right. We are certainly in properties that we own that have this sort of smaller unit size configuration. It's it's less than a one to one ratio for cars to units. When we have family sites, that's certainly more than that. So it really depends on the demographic of who's living in the units. But when you focus in on the properties that are in our portfolio that have the smaller unit sizes, like we're contemplating for this particular project, yes, we are seeing the ability to not have as many parking spaces as we have units.
Correct. Thank you.
Lisa?
Yeah, so I'll I'll follow on with the parking as well. I was curious from the applicants, kind of how you took into consideration the proximity to Boulder Junction and to the Boulder Junction Access District, which I know this wouldn't be part of, but I was just curious how that informed your ideas around parking reductions or what might happen over time with this site.
Well, I appreciate that question. It's very, I mean, our office is actually right next to this site, so we we know that that commute very well. It's a really quick shot down Goose Creek, and you end up right at the RTD center. I know that it's an exactly seven minute walk from the intersection of this of this spur in Goose Creek, because I've done it many times. So yeah, if if someone is primarily using RTD to get to where they need to go, and that happens to be right on the route, which most of the routes are to that RTD center, it is a really easy commute. So that that doesn't just happen for jobs, right? It also happens for people getting to DIA. So what what what's kind of cool about that is, to Laura's point, if people don't want to have a car, they can, there's a way to make it work, right? You can still get to the airport, you can still get to the hospital, you can still get onto the bus to do things that you might otherwise need to do your do in your car regionally. So we did take that into account. I think that this site, because of its location, is a better candidate for that 25 space reduction, much more so than something like in North Boulder might be.
Thank you.
John?
Yeah, thank you. I'm interested in your attitude towards the ground floor and the possibilities for for making it a lively place for pedestrians walking by. And I just observed that most residences on the ground floor in well-traveled streets tend to pull their curtains shut and try and get some privacy from the people walking by. How how do you think about addressing these things?
That's another excellent question. So we've done this a couple of times. Most recently, a canopy around the corner. It's interesting, and this is actually maybe a segue. So there's a number of tricks you can use with the first floor residents to make them feel like they're part of the street but not exposed to the street. Different screen walls, so plantings, setbacks, trellises, awnings, public private shared spaces right between the sidewalk and the building help with that. Another thing that helps with that is grade change. Grade change is relatively challenging with a 35 foot height limit because, you know, three stories and 35 feet, as you guys know, is is pretty much right there. So if if that's something Planning Board is concerned with, when we come back, we may, it might be beneficial for us to ask for a few feet over that 35 foot height limit because we can raise that first floor up a little bit, assuming that we can get, so we can get, you know, ADA accessible entries to the first floor, and we can have a little bit of grade separation. Historically, that's the way in cities planners have dealt, and architects have dealt with that. You have a few steps up, and that helps create a little privacy for the folks. That and, you know, different types of shades, like up-down shades. We feel that, John, I think your point is a really valid one, and it needs to be handled well. Otherwise, you can feel fairly exposed at the first floor.
I thank you for the answer, Bill. I'd like to follow up on John's question. This is going to be like design and construction nerd heaven. But I'm really interested in what are the required setbacks for the zone that you're you're building in, and what are, what's the required sidewalk width? Because I feel like, to your point, that these are very big blocks, and you're trying to make them feel smaller by making a slightly smaller building, the set of buildings. But the setbacks and the sidewalk width can make a big difference on that as well. So I just like, if you could just give us some details on that.
Sure. So generally, in Boulder, I believe, and Steph, correct me if I'm wrong, but there is a minimum sidewalk now of five feet. So in no case would the sidewalk be smaller than that. In some areas where staff assumes heavy traffic, like 30 and Pearl, if you remember the intersection when we did that one, it can be more like a 12 foot sidewalk. So I believe that staff has asked for a five foot sidewalk here, which, you know, in my mind, is a fairly good compromise between capacity and not feeling like you're, you know, walking along a road if there's not a ton of traffic. The setback, as you know, we can vary it in site review, so we're fairly compliant with it right now. I think we're about 10 feet from the back of the walk to the face of the building. But that's manipulable, too. We don't want to go too close. We wouldn't want to go to like three or four feet because then we don't have enough room to do those things I talked about. I would feel comfortable, you know, starting in around, seven and eight feet feel pretty good. 10 feet you can do a lot in. So I think we have to kind of look at that and what the, you know, what we all think is appropriate there. But that kind of setback might be where we are, and certainly interested in all your thoughts on that, too. I think the required setback is 12.
It looks like, it looks like on the corner lots in the BMS zone along streets, it's 10 feet along. Going to the code. It's our opportunity to vary that in site review.
Okay, thank you. I'll I'll bring that back up when we're making our comments. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other Plan Board questions for the applicant, David Ensign? Maybe unmute there.
I had a little clicking issue there. Yes, the, just thinking about the parking, you know, the fact that we are looking into affordable site and, you know, parking spaces are not cost free from the standpoint of real estate. I think the making, not having, needing a parking space could be financially attractive if some principles were used. And I wondered if you thought about, you know, maybe giving people who don't have a Sorry? Somebody say something? People who don't have a car, a financial break, maybe it could be looked at as a break instead of a charge for other people. And then also maybe like to Lupita's point, if you require your car or your vehicle for a job, then also take that into account. So a management plan that would help people who absolutely have to have a space, but also give incentives to people who don't need a space.
And I'm just going to second that, I think, especially with the, how close it is to Boulder Junction.
I asked you to hold on for a sec. Do we have a question there? This is time for a question for the applicant.
Yeah, that was my question, is that, has there been thought put into that yet? And maybe that's not something you would do tell site review, but I just wanted to ask if there had been thought on that.
I can take that one, and then Lisa maybe has a tag along. But the, yeah, so over at 30 Pearl, we certainly have engaged with the Sump Principles. It's a little tricky with the tax credit program. We actually were trying to provide a rent reduction to folks as an incentive to come to the site without a car at 30th and Pearl to meet that Sump Principle of paid, so they would just pay less. And we we ran into some very real issues with tax code on that, so we were not able to move forward. So some of the financing for the affordable projects, when you use tax credits, will limit the types of things that we can do financially for benefit to reduce. But it's a really great suggestion. We were right there with you for 30th and Pearl. With that said, in terms of Sump Principles, we haven't thought too much about it at this site since we're not in a district. But, you know, we certainly are following an abridged version of Sump at 30th and Pearl and could certainly look at doing something similar in terms of shared and unbundled and, you know, some some manner of that at the site as well.
Okay, so David, was that good an answer that you you were looking for for your question?
Yeah, I just wanted to hear what had been thought about so far, and I didn't mean to get into deliberations too far. Thank you.
Okay, and Lisa, did you want to ask a question too now? Okay. Any other questions from the board for the applicant?
Yes.
Peter?
Thank you very much to everyone in the applicant team. A few questions. I see how you moved from the the parking ratios and then opened up this central field. Did you do further calculations of as park, as driving and mobility changes, what could be possible on the site to take advantage of yet more space, somewhat echoing David's point of view that this is 100% affordable project and every space that isn't needed can go towards housing members of our community? And do you think the the future will come where a site like this can get away with even less parking? Somewhat related to that, as you open up that field, the second question is the decision to orient the building, and I'm sure you'll have quick answers to this, in a way that the sun travels and the V that's created as the southwest corner basically will shade the entirety of that plaza, interior plaza. And if you flip that, you would actually get exposure to the sun and the views. I'm sure that there are surrounding properties that you don't necessarily want to open up to necessarily. I'm trying to envision what's right there. And that's my third question.
Hey, Peter, you want to ask questions one at a time, so we can get answers?
Oh, I was trying to test Holicky, but sure.
I'm not, I don't want to make him work too hard. So what's the first question?
First question is, let's skip the first question. Let's go to the second question. This beautiful open space that seems like it's going to be in the shade all the time. Why?
I think the answers to the questions in order are 1812, speed of sound, and, wait, I got the questions wrong. I remember the first two questions, Peter. So the one you're asking now is, right now, we've got the building kind of making the corner rather than being an entrance corner where the green space is held to the southeast towards where the the path comes in. I think that's what you're asking.
Well, figure four is really what does it for me on the right. Figure four, constant planning and massing, if you look at that, if I'm looking at that right.
I'm sorry, Peter, which one?
Figure four on page five of 53.
Oh, okay, I'm on the wrong, wrong thing. Let me get there. Figure four, yeah, I I'm with you. So you can see the same thing on the slideshow that you have rolling. If you go to our eroded mass, you know, the the five diagrams. Yep, right there. So Peter's essentially referencing a drawing pretty similar to the bottom right hand one where you can see the the shadows as the shadows move through the site. The shadows are backwards on this. The center green will be in shadow for at least part of the day, depending on the time of the year, in the summer, not so much in the winter, a considerable amount of shade. So Peter, I think your question is, why wouldn't we just mirror that L so that the open space, the inside of the L points outward so that it's always sunny? Good question. So I think that the attitude that we're taking is that the street is the most important thing. Making the public way, making the public room is critical. All of our policies, including even form-based code where it's really codified, talk about making the corner, making the corner strongly with the building to hold the corner of the streets and to keep the buildings close to the street for walkability. In fact, and I don't know if it's in this zone, Andrew can help me out, but there is a requirement that the buildings be within a certain distance of the front yard setback, again, to make that street in many of our downtown zones, many of our core zones. So I think we're putting the planning principles first. I think you are making a good point about the open space. That's one of the nice things that happens when the parking drops from 100 to 75 is that there's more green and it's more open. You can see the length of the shadows in this bottom right one. They wouldn't come close to taking up that whole interior plaza. But if we do get rid of the parking, then we can start to rethink. You know, this is concept plan, so things will change. And we can kind of rethink where the best use of that open space is, how it wants to be used. Maybe there's actually community space that goes there. Maybe there's a different way to do the units. So I think your first question tackles both, too, and says if, you know, if we're going to have more available area that's not paved, how do we use that effectively, which I think is a really good point. I don't have a great answer for that yet because we haven't designed it. But in terms of why we're making a strong corner, that's why.
Okay, great. Last question, then. I'll skip the first one and go to the third that I didn't pose yet. If I'm leaving this site and I want to go south on 28th, how do I do that?
There's two ways to do that. We are, our office, I can answer this one from personal experience because our office is just... Sorry?
It has to be legal.
Oh, yeah. You're legally allowed to take a left and go south on 28th coming out of that street as it hits.
At Bluff?
Yes. Bluff is allowed to take a left-hand turn. So there's only a couple of times a day when that's a challenge. It is a challenge, you know, say between 4:30 and 5:30 during rush hour. And it is a challenge between like 9 or 8:30 and 9:30 during the rush hour of people taking their kids to school and running around and doing stuff. When that happens, we just go the other way. You know, if nobody, and even then, you can always get out legally. But if somebody doesn't want to deal with that 30-second wait to turn left, they'll just head north on 29th, take a left at the light, and then take a left on 28th Street. So there's a light-protected way, you know, traffic light-protected way to go south on 28th from there.
There's a light, you can take a left on Valmont from 29th?
Yes, and it's light, there's a traffic light there now.
Okay, got it.
It's relatively decent.
Okay, that explains that. Thanks.
Any other Planning Board members have questions? You can speak up because I can't see your hands with the screen being shared. Okay, now I can see. Anybody have any other questions for the applicant? All right, Bill, John, go ahead.
Yeah, you've designed this to basically exclude passersby from the open space to the degree possible by having it, you know, protected from the sidewalks by the buildings. Is that intentional?
John, that's interesting that that's the impression that's coming out. It wasn't really intentional. The open space is designed to be used by the inhabitants of the building. It's not designed to be a park. So to some extent, it wants to be protected. But the intention of opening up three pathways into the middle was so that there was the perception of permeability and a perception of access. So the main one is a diagonal, you know, pass-through that comes out of the southeast corner so that when you come out of the bike path, you're looking right through the building into the open space. But then, because it's three buildings at each end, on the north side and at the west side, there's a pretty big opening on the north side, that's about 20 feet. On the west side, that's closer to 40 feet of a, you know, a secondary open space there that also accesses access to the inside open space. So, you know, I think one of the questions for Planning Board is, how important is that, John? And if, for example, if you feel it's important and you're not getting it from the way it's designed right now, that would be good to know, and we can work on that moving forward. But the intention is to have it private, private use, but still, you know, perceptively open.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, hey, Bill, or actually, this may be a Boulder city staff question. The big dashed line on the transportation plan, figure seven it is in our packet, that goes from 29th and Bluff to 30th and Bluff, what does that represent? Is that a future street connection, or?
Andrew, you're muted. Let me help you out with that.
Let's pull it up on the screen, too, so we can just make sure we're talking about the same.
The alleys have the short dashes and 20, the Bluff Street continuation to the east has bigger dashes. I don't know what that represents.
That's a good question. You know, am I a Ben actual street, a future street connection, Bluff Street? That's what it looks like to me.
If you can give me a minute, I can pull it up and decipher it. Thanks a lot.
Actually, I'll let you know, I happen to know what this one is. So that is supposed to be a future street connection. And if you look at the transportation master plan, it says that it might function more like an alley until it's fully redeveloped. But that connection letting east to 30th Street is going to be a road. That's the T M P.
Okay, great. Thanks, Bill. That's useful. And then one more question, and this one's for you. You know, given the requirement for one and a quarter parking spaces per one-bedroom apartment where you have the apartment mix the way you do, was there ever consideration of changing the mix, getting in under 60% and having more bigger apartments so that you would have a lower parking requirement?
Yeah, that's a good question. So really briefly, the rule is if you have more than 60% of your units one-bedroom, then the parking requirement for those go from one per unit to 1.25 per unit. You know, what we're, that little kicker, in our mind, doesn't really represent the reality of what's needed. What we're more concerned with is how many parking spaces are actually needed. And in this, we're really relying on BHP's management of their, you know, 1,500 or so units that they have in place right now. So we think we're pretty comfortable with two things. The unit mix is really designed for the need. They just had, Laura can chime in, but there was an enormous number of applicants for the CCL units over at Spark when they opened, and they have a pretty good idea of how many folks were looking for what type of units. So this is really designed to serve the needed unit types. And then the parking is really crafted around what kind of vehicle parking the people that are in those units tend to need throughout their portfolio. So we felt, to answer your question, Harman, we really felt like we needed to design for the affordable housing need for the folks that really need affordable housing first, rather than trying to craft a way to get around a land use code.
All right, thanks a lot, Bill. That answered my question. Anybody else got a question before we go on to public comment? Lisa, was that your hand? No? Yeah? Okay. All right, that's it for Planning Board. Thanks, applicant team. And let's open it up for public comment. I'm going to turn it over to our moderator, Brenda.
Right, if you would like to participate in public comment for this application, please indicate that by raising your hand using the raise hand function. That can be found by scrolling your mouse at the bottom of your screen. Find your menu. For some people, it may be at the top. Once you find your menu, the icon that says participants, click on that to open the participant box. At the bottom of that box, you'll find a raise hand button. By raising your hand, you will indicate that you would like to participate in public comment for this application. I am not seeing any so far, but we should give it a minute. While we're waiting, I'm going to go ahead and say goodbye to our video for our applicants. We can bring you back if we need you later. And I'm still not seeing any hands. Oh, I see one hand for public comment. So we'll go ahead. Let me pull up the timer as well. We have a three-minute timer for public comment. Let me share that screen. And our hand raised is for Lynn. Lynn, I'm going to unmute you and again ask you to say and spell your first and last name for the audio recording. You should be able to unmute now.
L Y N N S E G A L.
Please start again. We just got you unmuted.
L Y N N S E G A L.
And I'll start the timer.
I guess people just don't get it. We have a depression, and you're saying, build, build, build. What Bill Holicky needs to be doing is repurposing all the caged, stretched parking and surface parking in Boulder. You know, why are you designing more parking when we have too much parking now? We need to get rid of it all. And you talk about going to the airport. Is the airport open again? Not as far as I know. Nobody's going anywhere. The COVID's sky-high in Brazil, and it'll go from one place to another. People aren't going anywhere anymore. Get it? They're not going anywhere. They're not going out of town. We solve the jobs-housing balance. There needs to be a moratorium, a building in this town, a moratorium. Now, I know you're used to, you know, a lot of development income, but this has been a free-for-all for the last few decades. And it's not happening anymore. It's done. It's over. You'll use the illusion of cheap. You know what's cheap? Filling up Dan Caruso's house. 16,000 square feet for two people, and their kids are gone already. This is obscene. The Ginny Index in Boulder is obscene. It's going to change, and it's going to change one way or another. I suggest that you do it with foresight instead of imagining that we have an economy anymore. We don't. New York's blown away. They're all going down to Florida. You know, people got it. Virish University, V U. You're talking about grade changes. 35 foot with the flatiron here. More feet, you know? These are inner-city tenements. That's what they are. It's beautiful. It's lipstick on a pig. Yes, it's different appearances of, I get it. My friend's an architect, too. He's home taking the care of the baby now, and the trauma-driven wife is bringing the baby. But repurposing our existing housing and creative architecture for our existing environment is what you people need to be doing. You need to change it down to the university level, the environmental design, the architecture training. Everything needs to be in that direction. You know, all of us can't be epidemiologists from now on. We need to be architects that do things with the redesignable environment.
Done. And that's the timeline. Thank you.
Hey, do we have anybody else from the public who wants to speak to this matter?
No other hands have appeared.
Okay, then I'm going to close public comment. Board deliberation. Thanks, Brenda. Appreciate that. All right, so again, if you look in 9213 in the code, there are eight criteria that Planning Board is entitled to look to in concept review. Feel free to consult those criteria if you want to make any direct responses to those, but I'm going to stick with the two key issues, and you can incorporate your thoughts on the criteria within those issues as well because I think they're pretty broad. So the first key issue is, is the proposed concept plan consistent with Boulder Valley Comp Plan, Land Use Plan, and Policies? And any board member may weigh in. Sarah?
Thanks. I actually think this is a very interesting proposal. And my concern is, I'm going to come back to the setbacks and sidewalks question. In 2.38 of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan, it talks about the importance of the urban canopy, street trees, and street scapes. And I'd like, I really think as we start to develop infill in the center of, what is now the center of town, we need to be very thoughtful about making setbacks, having as significant setbacks, so there can be a lot of green and a lot of trees and wider, wide sidewalks so that the pedestrian experience is actually a lovely, can become a lovely experience. And if this is the beginning of, I have walked through TVAP quite a bit since we've all been stuck at home and walk, taking hikes and walks is our primary form of getting outside. And I'm always struck when I walk through there how little green there is. And I would hope that in the other infill development that we undertake in Boulder, we do as much as we can to make sure there's a lot of green space. So with regards to key question number one, I really would encourage setbacks and sidewalks that are as wide as possible, given the constraints that you're operating on and trying to keep a three-story building and a 38-foot height limit.
Anybody else? David?
Need to learn how to get faster at that little button. So yes, if I go through the key issue one criteria in our package, absolutely jobs-housing imbalance, compact development pattern, enhanced design for all projects, neighborhood streets, alleys, connectivity, local solutions to affordable housing, affordable housing goals, and integration of permanently affordable housing. All of those are furthered with this proposal. I think it's a really, a really nice package. I'm very impressed. I think it makes me hopeful that we're going to make some progress towards our 15% affordability goal with projects like this. 2.16 is the one that I think that people will discuss a little bit, and that is the mixed use. And I think that that's the purpose of use review and of some, you know, we have these sort of prescriptive codes in some ways, but use review gives us the opportunity to say, look, if there's on balance a reason why we wouldn't necessarily ask Boulder Housing Partners to start managing commercial on-ground level, maybe we can justify that. And one thing I would look at is, are there a lot of neighboring areas with commercial? And is there a lot of pressure on trying to get more commercial space in that neighborhood? And I don't know that there really is. And so to me, I could probably live with 2.16 not being fully met on the site because there are mixed-use areas very close by. We are gaining a lot of street activation with this. Right now, there is no street activation with what's there. Everything is just a parking lot leading to something many, many feet away. So while I do, I really like your comments, Sarah, in terms of green and good design at the street. I also like bringing some life closer to the street as well. So that part, I think I'm pretty supportive of. Also, if it did, if there were, if there did need to be some look at height limitation, I appreciate that you're keeping within the 35-to-40-foot range, but if there needed to be a little bit of leeway in order for various unsunde- design concerns, I'm not sure that would be a problem, given the amount of affordable housing we would be getting from this site. Let's see. Oh, I also wanted to say, on the area of mixed use, it's also important to acknowledge we're not displacing any street-facing businesses right now with this project. The only thing, there is one sports facility. There, the only thing there is one sports facility. So so that's another thing to think about is at least if, if we're not meeting that criteria exactly, at least we're not taking away any, any street-facing booths. So, thank you.
Anybody else wanna weigh in?
Yeah.
All right, call on Lupita. Go ahead Lupita.
Thank you. On the, on the issue of mixed use, I was wondering if there is some sort of provisions of, you know, when we talked about the walkability, I wonder in terms of the amenities that we expect within a certain radius from a site like this one where we have, you know, a sizable population living in. So is there some, and this is something probably even, even Harmon can help me, because you have a lot of experience. What would make sense if there was any real need? Because I know there's a lot of businesses around there, but the ones that will be most necessary, so that, just to consider that, is that really necessary? We're really not gonna be missing anything.
Right. That's what we would consider at use review Lupita. And this, if you don't put retail on the first floor in this zone district, if you go residential, you have to show that it meets the community and its needs. And that's, that's the prime question in use reviews. So
Okay.
You know, yeah, all right. Did you have any comments about comprehensive plan compliance, or you wanna let somebody else talk next?
I really like the list. I think it meets a lot of them. So I'm, I like this project.
Okay. Who's next? John Gerstle?
Yeah, thank you. First, first of all, I, I agree with every comment I've heard so far. So that's a, that's a thrill for me. But I would say this does meet, it is consistent with the comp plan and policies. My primary concern is, I alluded to before, with respect to the ground floor and mixed use is to make it a, to improve the pedestrian experience and improve the experience for those living on, on the ground floor. And I, you know, the, the architect has mentioned that they're aware of that concern and proposed some design solutions to it. But I continue to believe that, that commercial activity on the ground floor is both most desirable and from a, from a neighborhood viewpoint and from a pedestrian experience viewpoint. So I understand the difficulties associated with that in terms of organizing the financing and making this project happen. But I would continue to encourage the, the applicant to strongly consider how they might do this.
Follow on to that?
Yes, Peter.
I would wanna really encourage the applicant not to do that. And that would cannibalize existing retail on thoroughfare frontage. It would put a business in place that would be unable to draw foot traffic. And it would take away from the existing businesses that we hold so dear. I agree with John that a pedestrian experience is key and it's always tricky to figure out how we put residences on a sidewalk, street level and have it feel good unless you're in, you know, Williamsburg or, you know, some great old eastern city that we have these great walk-ups and it feels good, people sitting on stoops, which you don't do here. But people don't go shopping in places they can't see from the street. And to push commercial in this place would be at the cost of affordable housing and it, it would, it would draw traffic into a place that we're already talking about traffic. And so I wonder how many people wanna take a right and a left and a right and a left and then find parking to go shopping somewhere that they don't even know exists, because they can't see it from any of the major streets. And that's a problem for our whole community to force that onto the development, because we will all pay the cost for that. So as someone who's operated retail establishments, I wanna, I do not want the applicant. I, my advice is don't spend your money trying to shoehorn commercial, at least retail into this. If there's some kind of an office, it's, it doesn't really seem to make sense in this case. So that's my comment there.
Okay. I think everybody's spoken except Lisa. Do you, you wanna chime in, or you want me to take it over for now?
Um, I would just say that I overall agree with the comments I've heard from other folks. I think it's an exciting project. I'm glad B H T P brought it forward and I look forward to seeing site review.
Cool. Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna use the policies that staff pulled up as my framework, but I'm gonna get into some of the other guidelines for review and comment around site review criteria. So I'll talk about the architecture a little bit and the characteristics of the site. So sure, jobs housing balances is a policy that's met, compact development pattern that David focused on two point one six mixed use and higher density development. You know, not having the, the residential necessitates use review. We'll get a chance to look at this if it comes in for site review. And usually I would recommend mixed use and, and just as a side note, not to pick on B H P, but you know, an organization that can navigate the brain ache of applying for and achieving low-income housing tax credits and which consistently develops innovative partnerships with different actors around the community, the development community, the political community in Boulder should be able to figure out how to program multiple uses in, in a building. And where it's appropriate, I would like to see B H P not, not always, you know, fall back on, that's not our mission. You know, the mission of anybody who is developing this much property in the city of Boulder needs to be, needs to include the good development of the city of Boulder. And in some places, I think having more than one use in a building is the way to get to that goal. So, so you know, with that sort of scolding out of the way, I'd say that in this site, which kind of feels like a dead end, because bluff turns north and goes up to Belmont, doesn't go through to thirtieth. It's really a tucked-away site. I'm there a lot. You know, I know that, that street very well. I know the cleaners that's on twenty-eighth. I know the Mediterranean grocery store and the fish store that sells aquarium stuff and the dive bar that's there. And it's just not, you know, it's not a place that is crying out for additional retail on the first floor. I did ask the question about whether thirtieth, whether the connection would ever be made through to thirtieth street, because I wanted to, to think about how, you know, this street might develop over time. But I think the fact that even the transportation plan doesn't talk about this being, you know, absolutely a street, but potentially just an alley doesn't really militate towards, you know, trying to look into the future where this is gonna be an important intersection. I, I just don't see it being an important intersection. So moving on to, in other words, I'm, I'm fine with, with no commercial on the first floor and would likely support that in use review, though I'm likely to be off planning board by the time you come back. Two point four one enhanced design for all projects. So, you know, locating and orienting the building closer to the street with a focus on the corner is a good thing. I think the massing of the building and the, the way that it's broken up and the materials that are used are handsome in the open space is usable looking. I would say that I think the canted outward impermeable balcony surrounds that are shown on the elevations just don't improve the architecture at all. It's a squareish handsome architecture and having these angled hard balcony surrounds. It just, it breaks the buildings up in a way that, that just looks like there's something in front of their faces and it's not driving well for me. And the color is not super complimentary either. So you know, that, that's my, my feeling on the architecture, but the building massing is good. You know, I, I agree with, with the folks who said that they'd be okay with a height modification. And I think that to get more affordable housing and have a more interesting building, having a step-back penthouse fourth floor wouldn't be the worst thing in the world. And you know, it could either be for, you know, more along the middle class, eighty percent affordable for the penthouse units. You know, helping us to fill the missing middle. And I don't think that having stepped-back penthouses is gonna hurt the pedestrian experience, which already isn't terrific. I think the building is gonna help the pedestrian experience, period. And a step-back fourth floor wouldn't do anything to, to change that. And if you're going for a, a height modification anyway, you know, maybe getting a few more units and getting some more interesting units for people to aspire to would be a good thing. I think making the building reinforce the corner to meet that planning goal. Like Peter said, it's not necessarily great for solar orientation. And you know, to the extent that the planning goal is to reinforce corners, I would say this is one of the worst corners in Boulder. This is not an important corner. This is a corner where a street just turns ninety degrees. The reason we wanna reinforce corners is because intersections are important. And, and bracketing intersections with buildings that reinforce corners at major intersections is a valid planning goal. But reinforcing a corner on a street that just is a loop street that turns ninety degrees and goes north and isn't really a focal point is, is really trying to meet the letter of the, the policy without meeting the, the spirit of it. And if you know, if turning the buildings around so that the courtyard becomes a really pleasant place at the expense of reinforcing the corner, I'm all for not reinforcing the corner. Neighborhood streets and alleys, connect, connectivity, I agree, the project meets that goal and, and, or that policy. It is a local solution to affordable housing in seven point oh one. It, it really helps substantially increases the proportion of affordable housing in the city. A great way to meet seven point oh two. Same with seven point one four, integration of permanently affordable housing. So those are my comments on complan compliance. Anybody, did that stir anything for anybody, or should we move on to key issue number two?
I have one thing there, just to tie on to what I started off with was the orientation and no one wants to develop a property that looks out on the back end of Dot's Diner and Relaxation Station, et cetera. And you know, Aqua Imports and Trace Reynas. That's assuming that, barring a word from Harmon, though we've ossified these developments by not allowing them to progress and the owners of these shopping centers have no choice but to perform capital improvements on them, which keeps them where they are. The future will not include us, the strip mall identity that twenty-eighth currently has. So to do it, a development that turns its back on the service side of these strip malls isn't looking to the future. And if anything, you know, it's gonna accelerate that future is to turn and embrace the mountains and look at the view and have people realize that these strip malls that they're looking at the back end of need to go. So I would encourage this project to be a little more progressive and creative into the world we want, in the world we have.
That's great. Thanks, Peter, Sarah.
So first, Harmon, I just wanna say, let's hope you're still on planning board when, when this project comes back for site review. You have great ideas. But secondly, it was my, my impression from the applicant's presentation that the purpose of that cutout, or I don't know the right term, but the cutout at the corner was so that it made a direct connection with the access to Goose Creek path. I, I could be, maybe I was misunderstanding, but I thought that's what that, what that, why that existed. And, and if, if it is why it exists, it's a, I think it's a valuable concept. You may also be right that, that, that for other planning purposes, it doesn't make sense, but I, I thought there was a transit-oriented explanation.
Yeah. And Sarah, I wasn't, I don't think I was saying we have to get rid of that connection. I was just saying, in general, I, I feel like orienting a building, a set of buildings so that the courtyard is usable space and sunny and airy is something you'd be willing to go for at the expense of meeting a planning concept about reinforcing a corner that's not a terrific corner. You know, that, that kind of thought can be met by redesign in a variety of ways. And I would never advocate for taking away a path connection.
Yeah, yeah, it's ancillary. There's always gonna be a way to connect in that, in that regard. Without a doubt.
Lisa?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo that, um, for this particular project in this particular area, I'm not overly concerned about commercials, simply because of how much commercial is already around it. But I totally agree with what Harmon said, that I'd love to see B H P kind of spreading their wings a little bit and thinking about ways to bring in some of that pedestrian-oriented, street-level commercial on other sites where, where it is more needed. And it might open up other parcels to development by B H P. So don't, don't lose it.
Thanks. Anybody else? Final comment on complan compliance? Okay, let's move on to key issue number two. Is the proposed site plan consistent with planned transportation connections and parking requirements? Anybody can jump in. Sarah, then John.
Sorry. So in the staff memo, they mentioned that Boulder Housing Partners doesn't, in the concept plan, talk at all about bike, bicycles and where they would be stored and parked. And I just think that's an important, obviously, it's a very important component of whatever they come back to us with. And I think this question of a parking reduction in exchange for additional open space is a really interesting idea. Especially if the open space is truly usable. And to, to go back to the point I was making under the first key issue about really wanting to encourage a lot of green space as we begin to develop our what used to be industrial areas. I think making sure that the, whatever green space we have, whether it's with a hundred and twenty parking spots or a hundred parking spots or seventy-five parking spots is a lot of green, some seating areas, like make it, I understand you don't wanna make it an athletic space, but don't make it a paved, I would, I think would be a mistake to make it sort of a paved cobblestone kind of space rather than a lot of green with places to sit.
Thanks. Okay, John?
Yeah, I, I think this does satisfy the transportation master plan. I do have one suggestion though. And that is with respect to the future alley going north-south, I think it's an excellent idea. There might be some consideration of one going east-west also. And I, I don't know what the practical possibilities of that is, but anything that increases the permeability of a, of a very large block to bicycle and pedestrian traffic, I think would be good. But other than that, I, I think this is an excellent location, close to lots of mass transit opportunities. And that's, that's all to the good.
Yeah, I'll jump in and I'll just say that that I, I think the unit mix, the answer that Bill Hollicky gave around how the unit mix is designed for the need and that they thoroughly studied the need and it isn't being driven by trying to reduce the parking requirements. You know, based on the, the way that the code is written for the one point two five spaces per one-bedroom unit in that mix. For me, that's enough. Justifies the parking reduction that's being requested. And I think that, that really meets our goals. And I would echo Sarah with, you know, let's, let's dedicate the space to good open spaces and additional housing density, I would add, if, if you can fit that rather than trying to fully park this project. Anybody else on this one? We can end. Hey, going once, going twice. Okay, brief wrap-up. Probably gonna miss a few things. I just have about six bullets. So paying attention to sidewalks, design, street design, green spaces and good design of those spaces is, is very important. Generally, nobody voiced any kind of opposition to a height. Generally, nobody voiced any kind of opposition to a height modification, if that's necessary. Not doing mixed use on the, or doing commercial on the first floor is okay for most of the planning board members. And it's important to make sure the ground floor residents, nonetheless, have a really good experience and enjoy privacy. Spend some time doing, more thinking about bike parking, consider usability of the courtyard in all seasons, and potentially consider an east-west connection. Like to just turn it back over to the applicant unless something's really jumping out for a planning board member and just let them give a rebuttal or just make a final statement. So Brenda, maybe you could let the applicant back in?
My apologies. Let me, no, fine. I took their names off so that you could see their names. So we have Jeremy. We have Catherine, who did not.
We have Bill Holicky. It should be Bill Holicky and Lauren.
Our, thank you, Cindy.
Laura, I'm sorry. Laura, shut up.
Yep, Laura, you should be able to unmute now.
We have her video.
And she's unmuted.
Hi, Laura.
Hi. Thank you so much for all that great feedback. We will certainly, I don't feel like a need to rebut anything unless there's other questions for me. I think that we have a really good sense of where a planning board is and where we need to be taking this project in its next iterations. And, you know, while you've got me, I'm happy to answer any last questions. I don't know if that's appropriate, but again, I just really thank you for your considerations this evening. And I think that that will be really helpful as we move forward.
Okay. Yeah, we're done with questions. So if anybody else on your team wants to say anything or if you want to let them speak, this is their opportunity, your opportunity.
My video isn't on for some reason. This is Bill, so I apologize for that. But, oh, there it is. Thanks. So, yeah, no rebuttal at all. This is exactly what we were hoping to get out of the concept plan was a bunch of feedback from all of you about what could be done, what the possibilities are on the site. So it's extremely helpful. Just one note is that there is an FAR limit on the site. So if, you know, just because we eliminate parking doesn't mean we can add more units, unfortunately, but hopefully there are other things that we can add that augment the site. And thanks to Sarah and John, your focus on the ground floor is good and a good reminder with good thoughts. Sarah, your focus on green is also helpful. Certainly, we wouldn't propose a plaza on the inside of the space. It would be heavily, heavily green. But appreciate your reminder on that. And we'll certainly try to focus on more, more botting and less paving. So thank you for that. Overall, just thanks very much. It's very helpful.
Thanks for bringing that. Looking forward to it. Anybody else from your side, Laura?
No, I think Jeremy is here to support, but I don't think he's intending to speak. I think we, yeah, I just really wanted to get some of your comments and your feedback. And I actually did want to just say, in terms of the commercial, I don't think we're afraid of the commercial. I do think that we have the capacity to do that down the road. I don't think this is the right location for it. But certainly, we are looking in the center core area of Boulder. And we won't bring forward projects that would be appropriate for commercial without it, if that site demands it. So just a little feedback there for us for future things, hopefully that you'll see coming forward.
Great to hear. Thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, thanks for the feedback, everybody. And for the challenge, Harmon, we will take that to heart and apply our creative energy, whether it's here or somewhere else.
Well, I only said that because I appreciate all of that creative energy. And, you know, you guys are, you know, really consistently brilliant in how you put these projects together. So just needling you a little bit and glad you took it that way.
I appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay, so I think we're done. Thank you very much to the applicant team for this project. And I think we can end the public hearing and move on to matters.
So our first matter, if you wouldn't mind, Harmon.
Take over, Cindy. That's fine. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, the first matter, if you don't mind, I kind of have a list. We were gonna discuss the selection of ex officios and liaisons. I have a list in front of me and we could just, if you, if the board is in agreement, we could just go, I could just go down the list and cast out, you know, the specific board or group and see who wants to bite and see who wants to, you know, volunteer. And sometimes we need a backup, sometimes we don't. So I can let you guys fight it out and see who wants to be on it, on which board or group.
Okay, so Sarah, just before you get started, are all of the, first of all, is this, are these all of the boards or groups that were being expected to contribute to this year?
And? That I'm aware of, unless Charles knows a few others after I, I sent them all in the email. Unless, and after we go through them, unless Charles knows of some that I've missed or?
No, that's a complete list.
Okay, so it's a complete list and it's not an overcomplete list. Things like the code amendment group, which hasn't held a meeting or gotten off the ground. Are we gonna keep that on the list? Are we gonna, is that something that's gonna happen? Or should we just abandon it? Is the East Boulder Working Group finished? Or is that still existing? Those are questions I want to know.
It still exists right now. It's wrapping up. But yeah, so we'll need to have folks assigned to those.
Okay, great. Okay, so Cindy, start us off.
I'm gonna start off with Landmarks Board. Who would like to attend Landmarks Board?
And Sarah, you're welcome to say that you want to stay on it if you do.
I do not. I would like to sit on, I'd like to be the liaison to a different board. And, but it was a very interesting experience and I appreciated David suggesting it as a first liaison experience.
And this is typically a board that's assigned to our new planning board members. So, you know, if that's something that Lisa is interested in doing, it's usually an additional meeting per month. And we would happily take your self nomination if you're interested.
It's usually the first Wednesday of the month.
Okay.
If that matters at all, if that makes a difference.
That would work for me. So yeah, I'm happy to volunteer for that one.
So you're a senior member on Landmarks Board, but you're often asked for you to weigh in on things. And Sarah, I don't know if you want to weigh in a little bit more.
It's actually, it is actually a great experience and a great group of people. And you get a different perspective on, like, I mean, you're, you have training as a planner, but it's a different perspective on planning in Boulder. And it's just, I think it augments one's understanding of what we're doing on this side.
Cool. I'm happy to volunteer and serve on that board.
No, I didn't.
You do need a backup.
I was just gonna say, I did it two years ago. And I also just wanted to add that they do a lot of ex officio, or I mean quasi judicial, I should say, types of things, which are something that we do a lot of. So they kind of appreciate having a liaison that's familiar with that kind of process, I think. So just wanted to throw that in. And you were gonna ask for a backup, Cindy?
Yeah. Who would like to back up in case Lisa is unable to attend?
Lupita, you can remain backup if you didn't get a chance to hold many meetings.
You're on. No, you just muted there.
And then I guess the other question is Lupita, if you want to serve on it as well. You know, I'd be happy to serve, but I'm also happy to stand aside if someone wants it more.
Yeah, initially I was gonna say, if you want to, you can kind of rotate. And then I can, I can take like kind of like Sarah's place and you can take mine. I attended maybe one meeting or two, and it is a useful perspective. And I think now I have appreciation for all of the history in the city. So that's a good thing. I was also aware that there were a couple of other committees that did not have somebody. So I will be happy to stay as a backup for this one and maybe take on another one.
Fine.
If that works. If not, you know, we can do the shifting that, like I mentioned, I will be happy to do what Sarah was doing before, whatever is useful.
So actually, Lupita, it's not unprecedented, what you're suggesting. I think there was, I was on, I was the Landmarks Board liaison. And I think in my second year, I swapped, David, did you and I share for a while? And I know that I was attending every other meeting.
I think you were my backup. Yeah, I think I was the primary liaison and you were my backup.
But there was a period of time where we did go back and forth on purpose. We chose to do that. So if you guys want to share it, then we don't need a backup. We just have co-ex officio members. And you can work it out amongst yourself who does which meeting.
If that's, that will work for me.
I'll let you guys, I'll let you guys work it out. I'll tell the Landmarks Board Secretary, the both of you, and I'll send her your contact information and let you guys figure it out.
So, Carla, do we need a vote on these? No, we can just do it in conversation?
Yeah, that's how you, I think that'll be fine.
Great, thanks. Okay, so HAB.
Yeah.
David, do you want to?
Yeah, I've been the liaison to HAB over the last year. It is an ex officio, so you do get asked to weigh in. You sit on the podium, but you don't vote. And HAB has been doing some very interesting work on listening sessions with the community. Very, I think, pretty brave kinds of things they've been taking on. And they were on the verge of doing one with the homeless population and the folks in the city that work on homeless solutions. And we got COVID closing that down. So that's still coming up, which should be very interesting. So it's a good, it's a good group to work with. They are a new board. So they are kind of finding their feet sometimes. And so they also can use help from a more experienced board in terms of, you know, just how to run things and stuff sometimes.
So David, are you interested in staying on?
I'd be glad to let someone do it if someone is interested.
I would actually be very interested in being the liaison on HAB this year or backing you up, David, whichever you'd prefer.
I'd be glad. Yeah, but if you want to be the primary liaison.
That'd be great.
Yeah, somebody else?
Wants that? Housing Advisory Board?
Could be a, I'll be a backup if no one else has got a burning desire.
So David, would you be okay with stepping down from HAB altogether and letting Sarah be the main and Peter be the backup?
Sure.
Is that okay with everybody else? Okay. And Cindy, John, did you have something to say?
Oh, no, I was sticking a thumb up.
Great. All right, Cindy, so we've got that one?
Yep, we do. Greenways Committee. I think John has been on that one for some time.
Yeah, I have to say, it's one meeting a year. It's not a difficult thing.
I'll volunteer. I ran a deficit up till now on all of these. And I have a little more freedom work wise. So I'll do that and I'll share that with someone if they want it.
Well, it's one meeting a year. So if you can make it, you don't need a backup.
No, unless we show up twice, you know, we double the force.
You can't do that. It's actually supposed to be one planning board representative.
And I think the meeting's coming up fairly quickly, so.
Another Zoom meeting. How exciting.
I probably won't need to do it, but if you'd like to put me down as a backup, just in case Peter can't make the meeting, that's fine.
Okay.
Peter for the GAC and David is the backup for the GAC. Now we're talking about DAB.
Yep, Design Advisory Board.
Yes.
And what is the, what, Design Advisory Board meets what? Once, how often does it meet?
Once a month. They usually meet the second Wednesday of the month. And it's, I'm the board secretary for that one. So they meet usually about four o'clock on Wednesday. Say, not every, not every month, though. We do have months that we miss just because there are, there may not be a project to review. It's a bunch of architects reviewing design. So they're quasi judicial. They are an advisory board. So they run a little differently. You know, they're just a little different.
Any takers for?
Well, I, I'd be interested in either being it or the substitute. I was, I was backed up last year and I didn't go to any because I think Brian was at everyone.
Yeah. He had better attendance for DAB than he had for Planning Board.
Yeah.
I don't know if I said that.
He might be listening.
You know he's watching. He can't get enough. He can't quit.
He can't wait until his gears up so he can come present to us.
These guys, big ideas.
I'd be interested.
Okay, anybody want to back up John or want to fight him for it, for the main position? David, want to try backing up John?
I could be a backup for that as well, since the Greenways backup isn't supposed to result in much work. So.
Okay. Anybody else want DAB?
Just as a question, is that an ex officio also or?
It is. It is. Yeah.
Put something else on your resume, John.
It's actually not an official ex officio position as HAB and Landmarks Board because those are required to be appointed under the code. But it's more of a liaison position. And it's existed for a long time. And I think it's always been helpful for a planning board to have somebody at DAB and be able to report back and vice versa. Well, not vice versa, because DAB usually doesn't attend planning board, but to have that connection.
But I think, I think it's also kind of important to us. And one reason I'm a little reluctant to take on the primary liaison role is I don't feel real comfortable with my architectural experience. But I think that it's important for us to maintain that relationship because sometimes during a concept review or site review, we may see something that really needs some DAB scrutiny. And so it's important to know whether or not DAB has seen it and whether we need to recommend that they take a look at something if we feel that it hasn't gotten enough architectural eyeballs on it, I think.
I can't tell you, sitting in on those meetings, that a lot of times that they will, the DAB board members will look to the planning board member and say, so what, why are we looking at it? You know, what did they talk about in planning board that made them want to bring it to us? So they may sometimes ask that.
And I think that's really more the purpose of the role, David. It's less about having design skills or design background. It's really about.
Yeah, because I can't claim any design background or skills or anything.
It really is more about the interface between the planning board and the Design Advisory Board and less technical skills.
Maybe if I have to fill in for you once, John, I'll get over my fear. I just am, I'm worried they'll start talking about expressing lentils and various things.
David?
They serve lentil soup there?
Door columns.
They're not even lentils. They're lentils.
Not even lentils. They're lentils. Before you embarrass yourself in front of the architects.
So, oh, they live for that.
Yeah. Charles, as long as we've got you here and we're talking about the interplay between planning board and DAB, since a lot of times we don't, we don't know what's coming. Though Cindy does a great job getting the agenda out in the Friday calendars. And we should, I should pay better attention to what's out there two months away than I do. But if there's a project coming up that looks like it's got a significant design component, which is gonna leave planning board wishing that DAB had weighed in on it before it came to us for a site review, then I would just ask that staff kind of keep their eyes peeled for things like that. Probably do already, but thanks.
We do. We just know that typically the board likes to see it first. And that's for refinements. But yeah, we'll keep that in mind.
Okay, I mean, I could see it a different way where, you know, we could just get their sort of aesthetic opinions of the building that's being proposed. And then we could handle the code compliance and planning piece in the site review. But if the tradition is we do all that first and then it goes to DAB for further tweaking of the aesthetics, then that's fine, too.
It's been done both ways. I think that'd also be a fine retreat topic for you guys.
Okay. Yeah, we can talk about that next. That'll be our next matter. Okay. Okay, so we got a John Gerstle is the rep for the DAB and backup is going to be David Ensign. All right.
Subcommittee use tables. That's more of a liaison role.
Yeah, so there's only three or four meetings left, so it would be great if we could keep that consistency with Dave and Sarah.
Okay.
We're wrapping up.
Is is there any reason to exclude a third board member who might just want to sit in for the last few meetings?
Everybody's welcome.
So is there anybody who wants to catch the tail end of the use table subcommittee?
And in fact, we have had three board members who have been official members, so if we somebody really wanted to participate in the last three meetings, I I don't know if that would be a problem because we've had three members.
Yeah, people would be more than welcome.
I noticed them, so they they always get noticed, so you could all attend, so.
Yeah, they're on our they're on our calendar. That's released every Friday as well.
It's just we've been treating planning board members who aren't officially subcommittee members like public, so they just we don't invite people to talk unless they actually are subcommittee members. I don't know if that we have to follow that, but anyway.
David, I'll I'll join you as a third member for the last few meetings.
Want to do that? Okay, and everybody else can join too, you know, anytime, just to Lisa was there last time and that was great, so.
David, maybe it'd be helpful just to explain sort of where we are in where you are in the process.
Basically, the the we've taken a deep dive through every use module in the use table and provided comments to Andrew Collins, who was on the call earlier, and Carl Geiler have been meeting with us every time and diligently taking down all of our ideas. Nothing that we say is considered, you know, a a decision, but it gives them clues as to what they might want to discuss with the public in terms of things that people would like to see in their neighborhoods, 15 minute neighborhoods, ideas for various ways to better to better align with comp plan. So now that we're done with the deep dives, they put together kind of a summary of everything, our comments, and now now we're going to talk about how we're going to do the community engagement process around this and get ourselves to a point where hopefully there can be some concrete proposals to City Council that will turn into an ordinance to clean up the use tables.
Couldn't have set it better myself.
Should I? If I stepped on anybody's feet who wanted to replace Brian on the subcommittee use table with and serve with David and Sarah, I can pull that back and and feel free to to join that subcommittee. I know I jumped in kind of fast.
It's enthusiasm, Harmon. That's good.
Okay, so code amendment group, I think I'll back out of that, so there are two slots that are open.
Wait a minute.
So this is work that is this is work that we're just going to be beginning, so this is just going to be firing up now and there will be regular meetings moving forward.
What what is it?
Yeah.
Related to myriad code changes that we're moving through maintenance and otherwise. So it's it's literally everything that we're we're bringing a package of code changes forward.
Well, so I will tell you that my experience on the land on the use table subcommittee was awesome. I really exposed me to the guts of the use table in ways that I think I would not have had the opportunity, so I would be more than happy to serve on this this code change committee, even though it sounds like planning it it could it it isn't necessarily very sexy or exciting, but it sounds like a very good way to learn.
This will be community benefit.
Great. Would love to do it.
Yeah. Changes in there.
I'd I'd be interested in that.
Who else?
I'm also interested, but I could be a backup. I don't need to be the primary.
How many do we want, Charles?
Well, we would want two primary liaisons and a backup.
Okay.
Why don't I be a backup? And that way I'll I'll just and so that everyone else can go ahead and I'll be a backup.
Is this a is this monthly meetings or what's the frequency that we're?
I'm not quite sure the frequency yet, John. I would say probably monthly. Could be more at times, just depending on where we are in the process.
And is there a day of the week yet that's assigned to it, or is that to be determined?
Not yet, yeah.
Are you anticipating using the model that we used in our use table subcommittee where you actually have a chair? So then so one of the two liaisons would become a chair and then and that person kind of runs the meeting like Harmon runs this meeting.
Right, yeah, that's that's the construct we think we'll move forward with.
Was there anyone else who is also interested in that? I know we have three of us express interest. Was there anyone else who also wanted to get in on that?
Question. I was still missing one that didn't have anybody assigned, because I'm like holding off to see who's jumping and then to make sure that I help. And but if anywhere where I can be of service, this will be a one that I will be interested in. I like like Sarah, I really like the idea of learning more of the nuts and bolts of how to get things done because it really it really helps with this other job that we do have now. I believe if I'm counting things right, Cindy, we still have one more.
We have one more East Boulder Working Group.
Lupita, I I would be happy to not be on on the code code group and and maybe go on continue on East Boulder, but.
Yeah, because that that's if you can. Who's in the East Boulder? Is that you?
That's been me so far.
How do you like that? How's I mean?
I I think it's a beautiful process. I mean, you know, the your role is I I take full advantage of being there and letting people know what I think, but it's it's always a little bit foggy about what your proper role in there is with respect to the working group or whether you're just looking over their shoulder or what, but I I think they're doing very nice work.
So, John, are you you're you're advocating to stay as the liaison on the East Boulder Working Group?
I'm I'm willing to, but if somebody else is interested, I'm also willing to step aside.
And if I could, that that might be one, John, that would benefit from some consistency. Not to say that we couldn't swap out members, but there's been you've participated. You've you've done a lot of work to that end.
I was going to mention I've served on working groups and and generally working groups are a little different from other things because they're temporal and and you're a part of a team that kind of guides the process from beginning to end, so I just wanted to add that to what Charles was saying.
Well, I'm willing to continue if 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 you all agree.
Yeah.
If I may add something about that one, I just checked. I'm working on a project with people from the from city staff and in fact, the one of the things that I'm supposed to look into is the East Boulder Working Group and joining at least one meeting. So this is related to something else I'm doing. So I would love to be part of that, maybe as an alternate, but also, you know, just joining because I will have to do it anyways.
So Lupita, I actually went to the last one and just to give them an update from the Use Table Subcommittee, and so I just spoke as part of general public. And then they kept me on and I joined the the breakout sessions, but I didn't say a word because I'm not a part of the working group. So if if you wanted to do something like that, if you had a message to take to them, you could do that as well. Just wanted.
So Lupita, one thing I I might suggest is that if if you wanted to be the backup to John on the East Boulder Working Group, and then go to a meeting or two as as a member of the public and a planning board member, but not especially the the official liaison at that meeting, if John was there, that would be fine. And, you know, I know you're you're very interested in how we communicate our processes with the city and and with folks in the city. And so with the four or so subcommittee use table meetings left that are mostly about rolling out the public communication regime for that, if you want to take that, and I'll I won't. You know, you could you could have that spot that I volunteered for on the the Use Table Subcommittee, which would be three or four more meetings, mostly around the public rollout.
I I would love that if you if if you're okay with it.
Yeah, I would be okay with it. So that way you'd have two roles in in these liaison positions. And you'd have flexibility because one only has a few meetings left and one you'd have the backup role. And so, you know, I think you'd get in the mix a good amount.
Yeah, because I I would like to see different aspects because I really will help me be more more informed and, you know, and whatever it is that we do. So, yes, I'm just looking forward to learning more.
So have we figured out the code amendment group? Who's?
No, not. I don't think we finalized that quite yet.
That's the last one. So so who who now, based on all of that jiggering and rejiggering, who wants to be on the code amendment group?
I would, and I think Lisa would, and John said he would.
I could be a backup or or something like that, but the code amendment sounds like you need continuous participation to be productive, so.
I feel a little bit bad stepping down. I promised Carl that I I would be on the code amendment group and work with him on that.
Oh, you did?
Tiring of of waiting for it to ever start. And then I with the current economic climate, it wouldn't start. So maybe I should stick my hat back in the ring for that.
Okay, so who are who do we have then?
So it sounds like Harmon and Lisa, right?
And I'm happy to either serve on it or be a backup, so please feel free to advocate for yourself if you feel very strongly that you want to be on. That's.
I know I can sit and listen and not, I mean, I
I have to.
I can serve as a member of the public, you know, so I'm happy either way.
And and John.
If it also goes for more than a year, then I can step into Harmon's shoes if he at the end of his term. So why don't we do that?
Okay, so it's going to be me and Lisa and backups are going to be Sarah and John.
Is that okay with you, John?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, great. I think we got everything.
Hey, you want to help us through the retreat agendas next or Charles?
Yeah, just one little change from when I sent my email this this week. Dr. Love had some surgery or she's having surgery, and so she had mentioned to me that she would like, if if at all possible, to if we set our retreat, if it could be later this month or even July, rather than the third week of June, late month or or July.
Well, I think the only thing we had on the retreat that needed to happen was the assignment of liaisons, and we just did that.
Right, so I'm I'm hoping that maybe you guys can think of some topics and then also Dr. Love could come and facilitate the gender communications topic.
All right, well, not to kick the can, but if if people feel like it's getting late and we may be able to work on a agenda for the retreat at a future meeting, we could kick this to the next matters and people could have a little bit more time to review these agendas.
We know it. We could do Harmon's. We could pull last retreat agenda and send it around to everybody and see if maybe that's a good starting point.
Cindy already did that.
I already did.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
You're all over it, Cindy.
I sent the last two years, so but if but to maybe we could find a a middle ground here. Maybe we could land on a date, a possible date, because I did ask people to bring their calendars. Maybe we could find a date tonight. And then at our next meeting, the June 18th meeting, we could you guys could come with some topic ideas and we could maybe piece together an agenda at the.
Yeah, I mean, look, just because I'm not prepared, because I haven't really studied the last two agendas, doesn't mean other people didn't study them and come with ideas. So if people want to try to knock out the agenda for the retreat tonight, then please go ahead and I can let somebody else chair this matter.
I feel like if if we pick a date far enough out from the 18th, which is our next meeting, right?
Yes.
Yeah, if if we're not, I'm going to have the retreat until, say, the week of the 6th of July. That's over two weeks from away, so. So I I would benefit from from thinking a little bit about it in advance rather than going into it cold right now, probably.
I agree. I sense there's a really great opportunity for this board to come together and make the most of this retreat. There's just great energy on this board right now, and let's take the time and do it. I'm I'm talking to myself more than anyone, but let's uh let's look at this and like make this awesome. This would be great.
Well, then your job as planning board members, starting with Peter, is to make it awesome. Come with good ideas for next meeting. We'll put it on the agenda under matters and and we'll work out an agenda for the the next retreat, but let's do what Cindy says and let's come up with a date tonight. Lupita?
Yes, if I may say, I've had a great time with the board. Thank you very much. Learning a lot, and I hope to learn more, but I like to just throw in as an idea for the retreat, let's try to integrate something regarding what's going on in our nation right now in a very substantive way. How can we and in not just like talking, but I said, what are we learning from everything that's going on around us? The two pandemics we're dealing with and and how can we do something actionable in our city? So if that can be part of our training, that would be great.
All right, so Lupita's roundtable idea, discussion idea, just just came in ahead of everybody's lovely enthusiasm. Remember that for next Planning Board meeting and you'll you'll argue for that to be on the agenda again, okay?
Yeah, without getting into it, I'd put a a deliverable on something like that or a result, which is let's multiply by 10 the amount of people who apply for planning board.
Wow.
Okay, so can we do the calendar check now and get a date for the retreat?
Yeah. So we no longer have a July 2nd meeting for Planning Board. The city is going to be essentially closed that day for furlough. The city staff is taking furlough day that day, so our planning board meeting is canceled that night.
Is that a suggestion that we do our retreat on that day or?
No.
That wouldn't be.
We're not working that day.
That's good information. So what's the day that we are?
Sorry to hear that.
Yeah.
Is there a chance we would be scheduling a planning board meeting on the 9th then?
That would be my hope.
So we might want to stay away from the 9th and the and certainly the 16th is probably, I'm sure, is the planning board.
The 16th there is a meeting, yeah.
The 16th there is a meeting. So you were suggesting something in the last week of July then, Cindy?
Oh, no, just sometime in July.
Sometime in July.
Everything is specific. I didn't know what Charles wanted to do about the July 2nd meeting that we've canceled, where that might be moving to, so.
Yeah, that my hope would be to move it to the following week of the 9th.
How much time do we want to set? I mean, that will help. Do we set aside two hours or four hours? Because that sort of will drive some of our calendaring.
Our in-person meetings have always been a half day. Like nine to one.
So I guess a question I would have for that and because that seems like a good amount of time for our in-person retreat. Do people feel like they can engage and be present for that long in Zoom? I don't know about other folks, but sometimes the we do it all the time for these meetings, but for the kind of work we're doing in the retreat, do we want to do it as one big block like that? Get it out of the way? Do you want it to be more like three hours? I just know when I'm doing a lot of thought work, screens can be hard.
Yeah.
Three hours.
Yeah. Cindy, I was also going to say that one of the things that we always look forward to at at the retreat is lunch together. That's really not going to happen. You know, maybe a maybe a timing change, something like 2:30 to 6:00 so that, you know, we can have our lunch, get most of a work day in for those of us who work during the day. Just take off a couple hours at the end of the day and then work through the retreat up till about dinnertime and then call it a day. Does that kind of three and a half hour block from 2:30 to 6:00 sound good to people?
We're still prohibited from meeting up.
Yeah, I think it's it's going to be Zoom, Peter.
The city's not allowing it until the end of August, I thought.
Right, nothing in person until the end of August, and that that might even be extended, so let's let's just do Zoom.
So how about the 7th of July, Tuesday? So how about the 7th of July, Tuesday?
It's my wedding anniversary.
My birthday.
Who's birthday?
Ella's.
Oh, nice.
Oh.
You can't ask Helen to work her retreat on her birthday?
Very nice.
There's two reasons not to do it that day.
Pick a different day.
Right.
By the way, Harmon, while people are looking at their calendar, I don't know if that was your son or your daughter who came in, but oh my God, what a cutie pie.
I missed it.
She's three and a half. She's a, she's really something.
So cute.
I know. So.
I could do the, I'm, how about the eighth? It's a Wednesday. Is anyone else available on that Wednesday, the eighth?
Does that step on any of the meetings that we just appointed people to, the exit issue or anything?
Maybe a dad meeting. Start at four.
Oh, yikes.
I'm available.
This was actually going to start.
I don't know yet if there's going to be a dad meeting. That's always.
Well, here, here's an option. I, I know that the HAB retreat is on the 22nd. I mean, this is later than we were planning, but if our staff, if the, if the city staff for planning board overlap with the city staff for HAB, maybe that would be a, a good day. No, no, it doesn't.
What about the week of the 22nd? Is anyone?
It's all this time.
Are we talking about June or July?
Yeah.
Well, June. On the 22nd, there's an East Boulder Sub-Community Plan Working Group from 2:30 to 4:30.
Oh.
Yep. No.
But Tuesday, the 23rd.
Thursday, the 23rd?
No, Tuesday, Tuesday, June 23rd.
Oh, back to June.
Oh, June.
Yeah, sorry, June.
Is, is, is the, the lady, Ms. Dr. Love or what her name is?
She won't be available till July.
Got it. She, she said she'd be available later this month or even July.
Oh, so is that later?
So, so how about the 30th, like the 30th? Just getting.
What a doodle pole.
June 29th or 30th, Monday, Tuesday, last two days.
Works, it works for me. Both of those are good for me.
And then would that give us enough time? You know, I don't think anybody's going to have to heavily prepare. We've asked in the past, you know, we've asked for Helen and Charles to help school us on motion making. You know, I, I think that's always a really good re-primer for planning board members, things like that. I don't know if you guys need a lot of time, lead time to prepare. If we made our agenda on the 18th and then had the retreat on the 29th or 30th, would that be too short a turnaround for anything we were potentially to ask staff to weigh in on?
Harmon, can I throw something out?
Yeah.
I was going to recommend, and I maybe not wait till the 18th for this. Lisa Smith brought up in our subcommittee meeting, the book, The Color of Law. And I thought maybe we should all read that in advance of, of the retreat. Because it, it covers a lot of the inherent inequity in zoning laws and, and it addresses a lot of the things that we might want to be talking about with regards to racism inherent in, in planning.
So Lupita, would that interest you if, if that discussion that you were proposing was focused as a review of this book, The Color of Law?
That's what I was going to think of proposing on the 18th, but then since we have that little amount of time, maybe we ought to discuss that tonight because then we could all start to think about reading it. Because if we, if we thought that might be useful, those who haven't read that book.
And what I'll add to it as well, for anyone who hasn't read it, is that it's, I, I found it very readable. I didn't find it overly dense, especially if you're interested in things like planning. And then it has some, if I remember correctly, it has some nice examples from Colorado and Denver. Nice.
Do you want to unmute Lupita?
Sorry, I always forget this. I'm entertaining my son, who's not as cute. He's already 14.
He was really cute.
The meeting and now we haven't dessert, which is pretty late. But, you know, I get, I gotta meal these things during the night. I, I wanted to mention is, I think that would be great because what I was hoping for is that, that we can come out with some, some tangible things that we as a board can get started for the city. So that we have something to show for. Out of this experience that we're, you know, witnessing, that we can come out with something that we can say, you know what, we are doing something special because we are responding to the moment. So I think being educated is always a good idea. And then hopefully from there, we can kind of see based on what we're confronting right now and what can come in in the, you know, in the immediate future, is this an opportunity? Because at least we're going to be, I think, a little more, more aware of where those opportunities are.
So if we, if we have all invested in reading a book and we're going to talk about it, we're going to want to talk about it for a while. So you know, if we talked about the book for an hour and we had our gender communication training for an hour and a half and we're only going to meet for three and a half hours, then, you know, that only really leaves an hour for the other item, which, you know, might just be, you know, a little check in with staff about sort of how we're doing as a board, getting our business done, talking about some, you know, technical fixes for things we might be doing wrong in motion making or deliberation, you know, a reminder about conduct on the board and, you know, what, you know, what we're really supposed to be doing during, you know, the different parts of every presentation. You know, what kinds of questions are appropriate? You know, that's the kind of thing I imagine maybe fitting into the last hour. And we just have three items on the agenda. It might not really be that much if we're only going three and a half hours. And we've got a book and a, and a gender communication training. So we're really only going to be talking on the 18th about how to fill the other hour.
So, I mean, we, we might not have to do a book review for a whole hour. We can bring it down to, you know, 30, 40 minutes maybe.
Okay.
But my point being is that it's a good place to start. Because we will start a discussion from an informed place where we all have the same starting point. I think it's a, and then with the understanding that this, this conversation, this particular thing can be a continuing thing and then we can maybe zero in into something that we do, that we as a team, because we are a team, you know, we think it's important now that we can actually try to do and hopefully something new because, you know, it's a kind of exciting, at least for me, is do something that nobody has ever done before. That's what is after me. So hopefully something hard.
Okay. Well, then let's, let's think about, you know, what, what'll fill the other, you know, hour, hour and a half. And come back and talk about that. There won't be any big heavy lifts that we're going to ask staff to do. So I think that'll be enough time. So if everybody can make either the 29th or the 30th between 2:30 and six or somewhere in that range, if we have to jog it in a half an hour in one direction or the other, that's fine. Do we need a doodle pole or are we, we good to set it tonight? People prefer Monday or Tuesday?
Oh, the Colorado primary is Tuesday, but everybody should have already voted by then.
Because we vote by mail, even though that's supposed to be undemocratic.
I've been gloating to all my friends across the country about our.
Let's, so let's do Monday so that on Tuesday we can be with our loved ones, waiting to hear the election results.
Monday it is? All good with that?
Monday? Sounds good.
Right. Monday the 29th, 2:30 to six. If Steph doesn't want to do exactly that time, just let us know. I think that works pretty well for my work schedule and hopefully it works well for others. If you want to push it around a little, let us know.
So 2:30 to six?
Yeah, three and a half hours.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Exactly 10:30.
Brenda, thank you so much for your help tonight. Cindy, thank you so much for your help. I know it's a, a big lift to get these things to run smoothly. So thanks again.
Can I just point out Cindy, Cindy changed the planning board webpage. Not only did she put the link to the meetings at the very top, she changed a whole bunch of text around where channel aid and all the things that are doing with virtual meetings and it's all very accurate right now with better links. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Cindy. And public speaking and all this stuff. So, yeah.
Thanks for mentioning that, David.
Thank you for doing that. I know how annoying that CMS is. So thank you.
And thank you, Brenda, for stepping in and doing a great job tonight.
Thank you, Brenda. My pleasure to be able to support the hard work that you all for the city for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Does anybody have anything else? Because that was kind of a debrief and a calendar check there. Anything else that any board member wants to say or that staff needs to get out to us? No matters from the city attorney, Hella?
Nothing from me.
Nothing from the planning director, Charles?
Nothing for me either.
Okay. All right. So any debrief anybody wants to get into before we beg off? Nope. Okay. And calendar check, Cindy, are we good with the, what we just did?
Yeah, we're, I think we're all up to date. So, yeah, we're going to be doing this for a while.
Okay, thanks much. All right, everybody. Great job tonight. Good adjournment.
Good night.
Night.
Bye.